Okay. We're calling a special meet, a special meeting of the city council to order. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
All right, so the first order of business for the special meeting is a consideration of the appropriations applications. Fisher, do you have a report you want to give or not?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have tonight with us a number of nonprofits that have applied for appropriations from the city for fiscal year 24. Twenty-five thousand dollars is what council has available at their discretion to distribute to those applicants. There were twelve applicants this year. I'll go ahead and share that with you. Agua Free Food and Clothing Bank, Blue Star Moms of the Southwest Valley, Catitude Arts, City of Avondale Senior Services, Homeless Youth Connection, Litchfield Elementary PTA, Litchfield Park Little League, Meals of Joy, One Step Beyond, which is a new applicant this year, PW Litchfield Heritage Center, Sounds of Autism, and Southwest Lending Closet. They've got a combined total request of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and dollars. And again, the funds available this year are twenty-five thousand dollars. And Mayor Aw will, at your discretion, let you call each of them up to share a little bit about themselves and what they're asking for this year.
All righty. So what we have done in the past, and obviously, Felton James will not know anything about this, but I think. All right, so then you understand that we normally have a very short presentation by each of the applicants who's here, because we have your full presentation in our packet. And since there are so many applicants, even if we spent only five minutes each, we'd spend more than an hour listening to what we already have in our packets. So I would like to have each of them, each of the, each of you who are here, though, as we call them in kind of the order that I've got them on, let us come up and, you know, you can put a face to your, your organization, and then you'll be available for if there's any questions from the council about your organization. Okay? As before, we have more requested than what we have available on our budget. So you have a form in your packet after the meeting. You'll fill the form out with how you would like to see the twenty-five thousand spent amongst these, this group of people. The city manager will perform his magical mathematical calculation with a really, really sophisticated algorithm to come up with what we think is the consensus of the council. Then that will come back to us at our next regular meeting for, for review and approval and amendment, if there are any amendments still. Any questions on that procedure? Okay, then we'll start with the Agua Free Food and Clothing Bank. Nope, they're not here. Which is, thank you, council. So we'll go back, we're gonna, we're gonna skip all the ones that are says, says not independent. That's why, that's why we got you elected. Thank you. So we'll go alphabetically again. The first one is Catitude Arts. Sandy Reagan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sandy Reagan, one-seven-seven South Old Litchfield Road in Litchfield Park. Been a resident of Litchfield Park for probably thirty-six years. And this year is our tenth anniversary for Catitude Arts. We're actually Catitude Gallery and Studio, but we're doing business as Catitude Arts. Thank you for your previous support of our organization. Being this ten-year anniversary, we have some brand-new young artists that are participating in our programs. And the program that we're asking funding for this year is a brand-new program that fills the void, actually, and concentrates on artists, young artists, nineteen to twenty-six years old. We already have programs for high school students. We have programs for senior citizens over the age of fifty-five. And this is a brand-new program, so we're excited about expanding and bringing more arts and culture to the city of Litchfield Park. And again, thank you for your previous support. Money is very important for nonprofits, but when we can tell our other funders, like the Arizona Commission on the Arts and other cities, that Litchfield Park supports us in our endeavors, it really means a lot. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
City of Avondale.
Another Sandy. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sandy Lopez with the City of Avondale Senior Center. We do have a request in and, and some learned attitudes. We have asked, have a question that you funded in the past to support our senior services center. We do provide some services to a few Litchfield Park residents. And the importance of senior centers are that they promote, you know, healthy living and also prolong that independence. So we're, again, seeking some funding to continue those programs, continue to offer and expand things to help promote healthy aging. With that, any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Questions?
Actually, I can make a comment.
Well, I'm gonna make my standard comment that I've made for ten or fifteen years when they came and have come and asked for money, but I'm happy to wait.
We've, we've been fortunate enough to come and, and work with you at holidays and, and do so much. And I know you guys don't receive enough back for what you do for our residents. It's amazing what you do for, for our residents and for Avondale as well. And if you have not had a chance to go over there and help work with them at the senior center, I highly recommend it. It, it really, it, you walk out of there feeling completely different. So you guys do an amazing job.
Thank you for that.
I just wanna, again, state the same thing I've said for many years, that what they request is not enough to compensate the city of Avondale back for the services they provide to our senior citizens. We, as a council, do not really do anything specifically for those citizens, many of which are, are in significant need. So I urge you to fully fund that, even though it's, it's not possible to fully fund all of these organizations. This particular organization is helping a group that needs help, and we appreciate that the, that the city of Avondale is opening up its program to service our seniors. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next group is the Homeless Youth, Youth Connection.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Dawn Bogart. I'm the co-CEO of Homeless Youth Connection. We have been very fortunate to have your support, I think, for the last ten years. So thank you so much. This year, you're considering a grant to support the kids that are, that live in Litchfield and attend Millennium. Right now, we have a total of fourteen youth in Litchfield. Of those, nine are seniors who are on track to graduate, and seven are unaccompanied youth. Right now, we are very proud to say that we have a ninety-five percent success rate of the youth that participate in the program. They stay in school, complete their education, and graduate. Last year of those, ninety-eight percent went on to the workforce, college, military, and vocational training. Hope you can answer the question.
Questions? You serve a great need in our community. We appreciate, appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next organization is the Litchfields, Litchfield Elementary PTA.
Hi, I'm Louise Comer. I'm the Litchfield Elementary PTA president. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us, and thank you for your support over the past few years that you provided us. We're asking for funding to go toward our thirty-plus annual carnival that we put on every year for our school and our community. And it's a, it's an awesome tradition that we provide for as a give back to our community. So, and it's nice to have some extra funding to help with security, lights, maintenance, those kinds of things, so.
Any questions from council? Another great organization. Thank you.
Thanks.
Meals of Joy. Already, there's some others, there's some others who are not here, Larry, that we could call first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All I gotta say is the residents of Litchfield Park are pretty healthy, and that's a good thing. We kind of, right now, we fluctuate between about seven to twelve seniors that are really in need of help in the Litchfield Park area. And again, like I said, that's a good sign for you people. They've got some healthy people around here. We're growing. We're in our tenth year next month. Can't believe it's been ten years of providing meals and outreach and for seniors in the West Valley. Currently, we have twelve cities that we're reaching out to, and we're adding two more over the next two, three months. Sun Festival is one of them, which is way west past Surprise, and also expanding Peoria area. Meals right now, we're delivering this fiscal year will be about thirty-three to thirty-four thousand meals this last fiscal year. And it's sad, there's still many, many seniors out there we haven't been able to help that are living on the poverty level. Some of them living at six, seven hundred dollars a month. I don't know how they do it, but they're managing to survive. We're in the process of opening up, we hope, by fall, our second kitchen, which will be down in this area between the Goodyear and Buckeye area, and that's a real plus for our growth. The majority of our service right now in seniors, of course, is Sun City and Surprise area, because the population age level is much higher than down in this area. But we hope to continue. It's, it's growing every year. We're outreach-ing now. We started a new plan with medical world. We've now contacted Abrazo and Banner and Archwell and Oak Street Health. There are two major clinics that have come into the West Valley. Each one of them have at least fourteen clinics, and their purpose is to help seniors with medical issues. The good thing about the clinics is that they're also covered through Medicare, and that's a real plus for the senior world. But we're finding that right now, in the next year, the medical profession is gonna be probably our, our strongest growth. And our plan is to help discharge patients anywhere from two days to a week when they go home. Some of them are not capable of providing their meals yet, so we hope to be able to provide them no-cost meals while they're trying to get on their feet. So that's pretty much it in a couple of minutes. We're happy we're still growing and happy we're still part of the Litchfield community.
Thank you. Any questions from council? That's it. Great job.
Thank you.
Next, excuse me, next group is One Step Beyond, which is a new applicant.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm Jackie Ehrenberg. I'm the grant writer for One Step Beyond. Would have had the CEO, but she's actually at our open house for the project that I am requesting funding for tonight, right as we speak. We opened a new facility right at the one-on-one and I-ten just a month ago. And so we're actually having a community event where we get people to come in and see what it's like. If you're not familiar with One Step, we're kind of like a community college for kids who've aged out of high school that are higher functioning with developmental disabilities, but aren't ready to go off to get a job and live on their own. And they get to walk into campus and choose what they want to do for a quarter, and then next quarter, they get to choose what they want to do, and they get planning with the, their mentors and with the staff members and with their caregivers on what direction their, their life should go. And so they get a, a decision on, on everything instead of just being sit in a classroom for, for eight hours a day. And so that's what I'm asking for is some funding. We started with twenty-five participants just last month, and we will grow to two-hundred-and-fifty on this campus. And so we know we, we already have a couple Litchfield residents and staff are in, in the resident in the population, and we will probably have more as we continue to grow. But we definitely would love to have your support.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next applicant is the Litchfield Heritage Center.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lisa Hegarty. I'm the executive director with the PW Litchfield Heritage Center, and I just want to start by thanking all of you for your previous support and, and previous years. Your funding has assisted us in helping to engage the community with the history, arts, and culture of the Southwest Valley. And we all know that's a very unique story that's part of this region. Last year, we were able to accomplish quite a lot with the funds provided, and we're seeking support this year to continue similar programs. This year, we're looking to continue to protect, preserve, and expand our collections. We will be expanding our oral histories, which add a certain richness to our historical record by gathering stories from people who have a long history in the area. And we'll also be looking to maintain and enhance the proper storage of our archives and artifacts. And we're also continuing to develop engaging enrichment opportunities and educational events at the museum, as well as through our cultural event, Las Palasadas, and through our walking tour booklets for Litchfield Park, which is also an excellent educational tool. And also, we'll be developing a new exhibit that will be up this fall called Crossroads of Change, which highlights a pivotal decade in the region from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-five, through the use of black and white photography. So we're very excited about that. So we have a lot of exciting things on the horizon, and all of those things combined, we think, really add value to the community and help people engage and really help develop a sense of place for our community. So thank you for your consideration and for your support.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you for moving the Heritage Center forward.
Thank you.
Next presentation is the Sounds of Autism. That's actually our last one.
Hi, I'm Cricket Barrientos, founder of Sounds of Autism. You have all chosen to support us the last few years, and we appreciate that. We extended our reach when we added our mission statement. We, we modified it, and it was to safely integrate individuals of autism and others at risk. And when we added the at-risk and the safely piece, it opened a can of worms for whatever reason. But we're working with the Southwest Advocacy Center. We're, we're receiving a lot of calls, and they support, it's a lot with Avondale Police, but we, we just presented to multiple people, and we're getting families that, you know, just don't know that their kid has autism or they have behavior issues. We're getting a lot of calls, and many of those families are in your community. We have really expanded over the last few years. I think we started in COVID. You have students, college students that live in your community that have supported us, and this year, we're focusing on high school. So some of our leaders, they are working with us, live in your, in your neighborhood as well. So they're out there sharing, and because people are talking about us, we're seeing more and more families come out. Autism is one in thirty-six. It's the largest diagnosis in the United States, and it's not getting better. We need a lot of support, so we appreciate it. We're seeing a lot of grandparents taking responsibility, a lot of abandonment, a lot of police interactions, and we're working with all of them to, to support this. So hopefully, you'll think of us. You have so many great people to choose from. I know it's very hard, but we appreciate anything you could do to support this. And lastly, we don't, we don't ask our families to pay for any services that we're doing with our warehouses and our workforce development. We've chosen to make this complimentary, because many of these families are living in single-family homes, and many of them don't qualify for long-term care, LTICs, anything like that. These are high-function enough, not to qualify, but low-function enough not to sustain jobs. So we're out there teaching them life, job, and safety skills. We have a lot of collaborations with many of these people to bring awareness to these individuals, and they're booming. So thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Questions from council?
No questions. Thank you, and thank you for your proclamation issue. We really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Okay, so the, the other applicants are not being able to attend for various reasons. You have the form in your packet. If you fill that out and get it back to this, to the city manager slash city clerk, we will do the magic and come up with, hopefully, a consensus of the council for the next meeting. Okay? Any questions?
Yes. Thank you. Baseball, Little League, whatever, is, they continually don't show up at this, and yet every year, they're, they're on the list. How do we, how do we change that?
You have the power of your vote.
Right, but, well, you know what I'm saying, is that they're always, they're, they're just never, or rarely have they ever had any presence at, at a meeting like this. And typically, when you don't come to this meeting, they end up with a lot of zeros on their sheet. So that's why it's, it's important that y'all be here, and we appreciate all of you participating. But, you know, Little League is a kind of a, a big deal here in Litchfield Park, because we have this, this baseball field, and it's, it's, it's really quite a field, but I just wonder why they don't participate.
What's the answer?
It's, it's baseball season, they might be playing. It's baseball season, and they might be playing.
Well, I can tell you why they're not here. On this paper, it tells me that all board members are coaching games tonight.
They, oh.
Okay. That's why they're not here.
That's a reasonable excuse.
Okay. There you go. All right. Any other questions or comments from council?
Send the team on.
Mr. Mayor, quiet. No comment? Okay. Then, then we will, we'll go on to our next item of business, which is a presentation of the fiscal year twenty-five operating and capital budget. A couple of budgets by Ms. Peterson. You'll note that this year's presentation of the budget and what it's being brought to us and presented to us is different than what we have done in the past. It's an effort to streamline, streamline what the council, the council's part of it, but at the same time, there has been in-depth work by the staff on each of the line items that go into this budget. So CFO can explain all that to you as she makes her presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight is our fiscal year twenty-five budget work study session, as the mayor mentioned. Like difficult difficulties. The agenda for tonight, I'd like to start off by going through this current year's projections and summary, because that's really the starting point for next year's budget. The budgets broke up into three categories, the personnel budget, the operating budget, the capital improvement budget, and then we summarize all of that together to see how that comes out and how that impacts the fund balance estimate and future fund balance projections. With that, we'll jump into this year's revenue projections. So this column on the left. That will work. We see the budget column. That was what we had estimated we would collect at this time last year. But our projected actual is estimated to come in at just under seventeen-point-three million. So our difference between projected actual and the budget is just over two million dollars and, or a hundred and fourteen percent of budget. And I do want to point out that the city sales tax of eleven-point-three million, there will be a refund coming. We have, we were notified, we were receiving sales tax that doesn't belong to us. We don't know the amount yet, but I estimate it's going to be around a hundred thousand. But I've factored that into this projection. The special events revenue, see, it's considerably higher, and that's that Prop three-oh-two revenue of a hundred and three thousand. I've mentioned it a few times in my monthly report. We're just now recognizing it as a revenue. And then the all-other category, this three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, that includes the cell phone tower rent, the franchise fees, anytime we have an auction, insurance claims, notary fees, credit card fees. There is a payment in there from Liberty of around forty-two thousand, or some work that Aiken Gardner had to do. So it's really just a combination of a, a lot of small revenue items. Each month, I do, in the finance report, I break it down by department. So we go through that detail every month. But for these projections, I put it all by function. So you'll see in this next slide, I have it grouped together by function, but I wanted to define first what these functions are. So the general government function is like the city council and commissions, and city manager's office, budget and finance, the city attorney, the clerk's office, IT and HR. Then we have our community development function, which is engineering, building, safety, code enforcement, and planning. Then our public safety is our, our contracted police, fire, and animal control, jail fees, the cameras, and then just some small public safety expenses and fuel. Then Public Works is so big, it's a standalone. Then we have rec, special events and community services. Courts also a standalone, and then we have our debt service payments. When we look at those projections by the functions that we just went over, the column on the left is the budgeted amount. So general fund operating budget this year was just over twelve-point-two million. I'm projecting we'll spend just under eleven-point-nine, so about three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand under budget, or ninety-seven percent of budget. So we really have the perfect scenario of our, our revenues are going to be fourteen percent over budget, and our expenditures are three percent under, which leads us, gives us a, a nice, or adds to our fund balance. I do want to point out that in the general government, out of all of these categories, IT will go, is projected to go over budget, so I will be bringing you a budget adjustment. So even though overall, it's at ninety-eight percent, when one category is over and the others are under it, it smoothes it out, but I will bring you that individual adjustment later this fiscal year. Ninety-six percent of our public safety budget is, is contracted. You'll see the, the budget was two, two million, five ninety-seven, but the projected actual is just at two-point-five, and that's because the, the Goodyear Fire final amount doesn't get to us until after our budget is adopted. So the actual ended up being about ninety thousand less than, than what we had budgeted. And then the cost recovery is what we really focus on for rec and special events. I have a slide for that. We do, council does have a cost recovery policy for recreation to be at fifty percent and special events at ninety percent, and I'm projecting rec will be at fifty-eight percent at the end of the year, and special events will be at ninety-four. So doing well over that cost recovery that we're looking for. So the fiscal year twenty-four summary, when we put all this together, our beginning fund balance was twenty-six-point-two million. Our revenues over expenditures are projected at five-point-four million, so that gives us a net of thirty-one-point-six. And we add our one-time revenues to that of two-point-seven, subtract our, our one-time capital of ten-point-five, so that leaves us an ending balance of twenty-three-point-eight million, which is what we'll start with in fiscal year twenty-five. The breakdown of this twenty-three-point-eight million dollar fund balance, council does have a, a policy to have a fifteen percent minimum fund balance, a thirty-five percent stabilization fund. So this unassigned fund balance is seventeen-point-eight million. That's really the money that's, when we get into the CIP budget, that the CIP projects are what will impact this unassigned fund balance. And I just like to point out, these are our estimates. The final numbers won't be complete until the fall after the audit. And before I move on to the schedule for the next year's budget, are there any questions on this, this year's projection? So the timeline for us to get to where we're at tonight, we started this process back in January, and Matthew and I, we had a meeting with all department directors to explain the budget process, and their, the guidelines and our expectations. So during the month of February, all the departments, they had all month to evaluate their prior spending for the past three years, evaluate their current spending to date, and then evaluate their needs for next year. So based on this evaluation, department centered their budget request for fiscal year twenty-five. In March, Matthew and I sat down with each department director to re- In March, Matthew and I sat down with each department director to review again the prior spending, next year's budget requests, and we thoroughly go through every line item to ensure that their requests are reasonable and necessary and because they're all here tonight. I do want to tell them thank you for all their work and I'm sure they feel like we've squeezed nickels and dimes out of them on some of these areas, but we do appreciate their hard work on this. So that brings us to where we are tonight. The council's work study session to review, there are some budget changes that we don't have any control over. And then we have some requests and then some recommendations. Next month at the regular council meeting will be the tentative budget adoption. So that will be where council sets the maximum expenditure for fiscal year twenty-five. Once we set that max, we can lower it, but it can't be increased. And then on June eighteenth, which is a Tuesday, because Wednesday is a holiday, we'll do the council final budget adoption. And then in July, we'll need to have one more meeting. It's on the agenda tonight to cancel the regular July meeting. So I believe Terry's working with you to find a date in July so we can adopt the tax rates. But it's a quick, maybe five-minute meeting that will probably just be done in Zoom. So as I said, I broke it up into different categories, so I'll start with our personnel budget. So the changes that I talked about that we don't have control over are the minimum wage increase, that's by lot. We'll go up to fifteen dollars per hour January first, which will cost the city about eighty-four hundred. Our health insurance did see an increase of three percent, so that's a cost of about twenty-three thousand five hundred. We did have some position, we did restructure some positions, so that had a savings of a hundred and fifteen thousand four ninety-two. So the net of those changes is actually a savings of eighty-three thousand five ninety-two. Do have some recommendations for personnel, which is a three percent cost of living adjustment, which would have a cost of a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred. We surveyed all of the West Valley cities. We looked at CPI. The latest CPI I looked at this afternoon was at three and a half percent, and then the West Valley average, their COLA and merit combined is eight percent. And with that, our next recommendation would be a up to four percent merit. It's dependent upon the employee's evaluation, but that would be at a cost of up to a hundred and fifty-six thousand. And then, as you all know, the Litchfield Square Park will be opening this fall, which is really exciting, but it does create quite a bit of additional work for Public Works and upcoming Hilltop Maintenance and Camelback Medians, so their current staff, to keep up with everything they do today. In addition to all of these new responsibilities, are recommending for additional maintenance tech one positions, and that's at a cost of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The total recommendations are five hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred, so the net of those two is just under four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And we'll stop there if there's any questions.
Comments, thoughts?
Sorry. Did we cut any positions with the hundred and fifteen thousand?
We didn't.
Or just reorganized?
We reorganized from full-time, some from full-time to part-time, so we reduced the hours.
That's great. We had some full-time that went to part-time, did you say?
Yes. Combination of technology has changed the duties of some of these. And so if you look at the need of, you know, every position.
Yeah.
Other questions? Charles Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For additional maintenance technician, okay. Is that, is that reasonable? Or is that, does that work for you, Kyle? All right, thank you.
We're going to be scheduling maintenance up on the hill path now on a more regular basis. Kyle?
Yes. What's happening?
We're going to be scheduling more regular maintenance up on the hill path.
Yeah, with the additional coordination.
Mr. Mayor, this is just personnel, this is not equipment that would be necessary to equip the.
This is personnel.
That's great.
I don't know if there's, if there's equipment needs or not.
This, this, that two eighty-eight is just personnel.
Do you have line item for equipment up there?
We do have some equipment changes.
Okay.
To compare this year's personnel budget to last year's, the grand total personnel budget is five million six sixty-five three forty-four. So that's a difference of just under four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And then our full-time equivalent positions increased by three point two. It's those four new public works maintenance texts, but then those restructures that we had, it reduced all other departments by point eight. So it's a net of three point two. And then a cost difference of about five point eight five percent. And that brings me to our operating budget. I want to start out by saying that there, we do have a policy that ongoing revenues have to cover the ongoing expenditures. So we don't take any, any one-time revenues to pay for any of our ongoing maintenance operations. There's several columns up here. I know we're focused on the fiscal year twenty-five budget and that's what is circled. But I, I like to give a little more, I like to give some of the history and then looking forward. So if we look at this first column, that's our last full fiscal year, twenty, fiscal year twenty-three. Our revenues were just under sixteen million. This next column is what we budgeted this year of fifteen point one. And then the next column is our, our projected, that we already went over that, just under seventeen point three. So fiscal year twenty-five budget, I'm recommending fifteen point six million. For city sales tax, it's an in, overall budget increase, but I am recommending five percent lower than the projection of, of eleven point three for a few reasons, as since fiscal year twenty-eighteen, city sales tax revenues have grown ninety-six percent. So we've had tremendous growth. We've had a lot of new businesses open, but we're getting to the point where we're nearly built out, aside from Litchfield Square. So we've likely hit our peak and we're, we are starting to show signs that we're leveling out. And the residential rental sales tax will also end in January of twenty-five. So that's why I am recommending five percent less than this year's projected actual. Future years, when it increases, that's because I'm, I've built in some modest increases for assuming there's activity in Litchfield Square. The state shared revenue, we don't have any control over this. This is the revenue that the state shares with us. But the reason why we're going to see a decrease is the result, the result of the legislature's two and a half percent flat tax legislation. So you can see this year it dropped from three point two to two point nine. Next year it's going to go down to two point seven. Then they have built in assumptions, growth assumptions, but the tax itself is, is staying at that two point five. And our, another one I want to point out is our investment earnings. This year we're doing very well and projected to, to earn about one point two million. That's really because of the higher interest rates and then the cash flow management that we've been doing. But in future years, so for next year, I drop that down to five hundred thousand. It's likely that interest rates are probably going to stay where they're at based on where inflation is at. But I think it's good to budget low and not get to a point where we ever rely on investment earnings. And if it comes in higher, that's great. It just adds to our fund balance. And then the all other, it's what I mentioned earlier, the franchise fees, auctions, et cetera. Before I move on to expenditures, are there any questions on the revenues?
Questions? Comments? Mr. Vice Mayor?
You keep mentioning credit card fees as a revenue source. If you, that's expense. What, what, what's source do we get?
We do have charge when people use a credit card to help cover that expense. So moving on to expenditures, I have grouped them into the same functions like we went over during the projections. So this first column is the fiscal year twenty-three actual. We were at ten point four million. The next column is this current year's budget of twelve point two million. And then our projection of just under eleven point nine. So to compare apples to apples, fiscal year twenty-five budget compared to fiscal year twenty-four budget. But I like to put in that projected actual because that shows what we're actually spending. And future year projections, I've built in just normal increases. That is an increase from fiscal year twenty-four budget to fiscal year twenty-five of just under seven hundred and thirty-one thousand or six percent. It's attributed to the Litchfield Square Park of four hundred and fourteen thousand. I have a slide that details all of that and it does include those positions of two hundred, the four positions at two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The magistrate court, there's an increase of just over twenty-seven thousand. That's because the court enhancement fund. Remember a few years ago, we started to get that fund spent down. We have spent it down to the, to the council level. There's a minimum balance of fifty thousand and then at the end of the year, it's going to hit fifty-five. So I'd recommend moving all the expenses out to give that fun time to build back up again. The personnel costs that we already went over just under a hundred and ninety-one thousand. There are added costs for library maintenance, based on that agreement that will be on the agenda later. Public safety, budget over budget, there is a decrease of twenty-five thousand six ninety-nine. But I'm going to go over that in a future slide to go over the detail from budget and actual. Council and commission had an increase of just over seventeen thousand, and that's mostly because we set the bar really high at state of the city and it is costing more and we are participating in a showcase of cities. Then we have an increase of tree maintenance of forty thousand. And then holiday decorations, an increase of twenty-five thousand if we wanted to also decorate the new park, so it's consistent with the downtown. And then net operating cost citywide, some line items were over and some were under, but that leaves us a net of nineteen thousand six ninety-two. Are there any questions on expenditures before I move on?
This might have been four slides previous. So where in here, in there is the budget for the library? Is that in the two point nine million for the Hilltop? Because we, we've already given the information to county, right, for what it's going to cost. That budget is budgeted this next year while Clint Hickman's still in.
We have a small amount of capital budget for library planning for next year, Councilmember Donnie, but not for the actual building construction itself. It's just kind of a placeholder at this time. The item only in the society is actually what county that we'd like to pursue that process. But it'll be a while for you to see that. I could certainly break that down more in the meeting as far as how that will go, as far as that plan.
So we aren't going to see that in this year's budget?
I'm not. There's a, there's a small item in the budget for that. The one that Paige was speaking about was there's money in the budget for this year for maintaining this library building. Because in the past, that's been done by the Library Association. Assuming you guys approve that agreement tonight, we will be taking on that.
I guess what I, I was thinking is I had talked to, you know, Clint Hickman, he's our neighbor, and he just wanted to make sure that we had some sort of, some sort of money in the budget for him to be able to pass this before he leaves in January. So is that not going to happen or how do we, how do we manage that?
What, what, what's happening is before they can do anything more at the county level, we have to come up with a, a plan and with an actual plan for the building and cost for the building.
Yeah.
And then once we get that, then he's going to, then he can go see what, what he can do about funding.
Okay, because we still would love this under his umbrella.
Correct. So what's in, later in the, in the agenda is an approval for us to hire an architect and do some renderings and actually produce the kind of process we need so we can get it, get it to the county and hopefully get it in their budgeting process.
Perfect. That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
So looking at the cost recovery for rec and special events for next year's budget, we're budgeting for rec to be at fifty-two point five seven percent and special events at ninety-four point five. And this is the extra detail I wanted to go over on the, the public safety, the budget versus the projected actual. So the columns in blue on the left, and the first column is the budget, twenty-four budget from the twenty-five budget and the difference. And you can see the fire had a decrease of sixty-two thousand, but that was because we estimated too high last year. And then if you look at projected actuals, that's where you'll see the, the difference in fire of twenty-one thousand. Police hasn't, and I'm sorry, I'm, I just confused myself. The projected fire is seven ninety-eight four oh three, which is what the actual contract ended up being. They did provide us an estimate of eight hundred and nineteen thousand four sixty-two, so I think we'll be a lot closer this year. So a difference of just over twenty-one thousand. Police, they've already provided us their contract amount, so it'll be just under, an increase of just under eighteen thousand. Animal control is flat, the cameras are flat. Jail fees are going up slightly, so we added a thousand for that. Police expenses, that's just for various small items they might need. And then one change we made this year is the fuel for all the vehicles is currently in public works. And we, now that we have our own police vehicles, it makes more sense to, to pull that out of public works and charge it to public safety so we can see our real public safety costs. So projected actual to budget is actually an increase of seventy-one thousand four sixty-two, what we'll likely spend. Some other operating highlights are Litchfield Square as it opens in the fall. And again, these are, these are rough estimates. We really won't know the actual cost of the park until it's been open for a year. I think Kyle has a pretty good idea. Six thousand for irrigation parts, ten thousand for water, ten thousand for electricity. This hundred thousand for repairs and maintenance is a blanket for the unknown at this point. And then those four positions that we talked about for a total of four hundred and fourteen thousand. So our, when you take the, the personnel and the operating budget together and summarize that, our operating revenues are fifteen point six million. Our personnel budget is just under five point seven. The operating budget is just under five point nine. Our debt service payments are one point four. So that gives us budgeted revenues of two point two million six hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-two over expenditures. And that completes the operating and personnel budget. Are there any questions before I move on to the CIP?
Take your dog?
No, there is a salesman that sent me that picture and he used it because it was really cute.
Any other questions or?
We like to tie.
Okay, thank you.
So this year we've changed that a little bit as well, and it's broke up into four categories. So our one-time committed capital expenditures that you as a council has already approved, we're already locked into those. Then we'll look at what we consider needed items, then projects that we've identified that we recommend, and then contingency. So our one-time estimated construction sales tax revenue was eight hundred and fifty thousand. We always use our one-time revenues to cover, to help cover one-time expenses. And then anything above that is paid for with our unassigned fund balance, that seventeen million that we talked about earlier. So our committed one-time is five million five hundred and thirty thousand. Four point nine of that is to complete Litchfield Square. Four hundred thousand is for the Camelback Park parking lot. Two hundred thousand for design of public works facility and then forty thousand for the Bullard Wash connections. Are there any questions on the committed before we move on to the needed?
Questions?
So the sum of expenditure citywide that, that we feel allow the city to continue to operate efficiently and are, and or meet the needs and expectations of the residents. So the sum of expenditure citywide that, that we feel allow the city to continue to operate efficiently and are, and or meet the needs and expectations of the residents. Total's nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two twenty-five. They're not in any order of priority. I just put them order of most expensive to least expensive, but I will say probably the. Highest on the priority list is the most expensive one, the full heater and main filtration unit. It's about forty years old and is really at the end of its life. It's the cost to replace is two hundred and seventy thousand. Every year we allocate funds for public works equipment and vehicle replacements. So that's where if Kyle needed additional equipment. He would use this two hundred thousand. We do allocate a hundred and fifty thousand for the citywide road program above HIRF revenues. We haven't had to use that, but it is. We do like to keep it in there in case we do. Seventy-five thousand for the annual IT capital. Seventy-five thousand for security camera system for the underpasses and city parks. Seventy-five thousand for significant perimeter wall repairs just as necessary. Sixty thousand for the design for perimeter wall reconstruction on the Dyser Road North half. City Hall is older and it oftentimes needs some updates and repairs. We've allocated twenty-five thousand for that. And then two small ones, five thousand for Camelback Park soccer goals and about twenty-two hundred for a new stationary bike for the waiver.
Okay, Councilwoman James, you have a question?
I'm just, yeah, question back on the. The twenty-five one-time committed capital expenditures. I thought that all of the Camelback Park was under this year's budget. But that's not the, the wall, the, the.
No, Sir Councilmember James, actual construction is not. The D and E was under this budget. We'll get it going this year, but some of the project costs of actually building it will be on next year's budget, sir.
But the, and then unrelated, the intersection repairs at Dyser and Indian School, that's under this year's, correct?
That's under this year's. Is there any over, is there any overflow in the next year?
Councilwoman James, we have, we'll be able to use HIRF money for that project. So if it doesn't get spent this year, it just rolls into next year and we'll, we'll. We'll budget to spend every HIRF dollar. So just depending on when the project. Happens, we'll be covered for that.
So there was just a little bit of roll over though from the Camelback Park that we're doing this summer. It's going to fall in the next year's budget.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. There've been a number of accidents at the roundabout. Where, where does that money come, the repair for that?
Insurance will pay for. And that hundred thousand that we do, that we put in the public works budget for repairs and maintenance, that also includes the.
Question. Question on top of that. So is it just like driving, the more accidents there are, the more they increase our insurance?
We are.
Is that possible?
Not our insurance. If there's damage to public property caused by a driver, we go after recovery from their insurance for the cost of damage. Insurance companies work together on that stuff. Any other questions or comments?
One comment I might add on that, just if we're talking about the roundabout, just so everyone knows, the roundabout accidents are not, the roundabout is unsafe. Very few of the roundabout accidents have been. Non-alcohol related, I'll say that. The roundabout, as council knows, is a very good DUI deterrent.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear about that. The roundabout itself and the design is not causing problems, but rather more people drinking and driving or being caught in the way, however you want to say it.
We need to sign, do not drink and roundabout.
And there's a reasonable expectation when we take Dyser and Indian School down this summer, that it could force more traffic down Litchfield Road and through that roundabout.
Yes, sir, it could.
Which could create more accidents.
It will certainly put more traffic on it, yes.
Hopefully it will not be down for long.
Hopefully not.
Okay.
So this gets into a much longer list. I think it's three slides. These are the projects that staff has identified. None of them have been committed to and they would all require council approval. The sum of all those is nine million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Mayor, do you want me to go through each one of them? Do we want to discuss each one?
My suggestions are, these are all possible things that we may consider to spend money on in the next year. So unless there's some particular question that somebody wants to talk about one of them. None of them have been prioritized as a, for sure that we've committed to spend anything. It's just a matter of trying to understand what, what are we, what projects are out there that we need to take into consideration that we may need to fund. So, Councilwoman James?
I was thinking for the, uh. Just the traffic signal at Fry's. I thought that was, isn't Fry's paying for that?
And they, they did, and I don't have it in front of me. We do have money from them, but I don't remember off the top of my head how much it is.
About sixty thousand dollars, sir.
Okay, so partial partnership?
Pay like a fourth of it.
Yeah, if that.
And is that, that's where, where we exit on Camelback? We go right over?
That was at Denny, at Diddy and Panda Express, there's funding for that one. And also when Sunset Terrace was built, they paid some funding in as well for an eventual signal at Litchfield, Missouri. As you'll see later on the agenda, I'm recommending that we plant a roundabout at that location, but there is some money for that.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Vice Mayor.
The congestion on Litchfield Road and Camelback right turn lane. A lot of our revenue comes from that intersection. I hate to discourage people from using that intersection because it can be a mess sometimes. That right turn lane, even if. You could only get three cars in that right turn lane with existing. Property lines, I think that would be a massive hill to people in there.
I agree, Mr. Vice Mayor. Staff has looked at that several times because it's a question of moving the road a little bit, a question of narrowing the median. It's going to be hard to put a turning lane and not cut it into that yard a little bit and move the wall over some on that corner. I, I agree, it needs to be built.
I'm not sure if it's only three cars long, it's going to make that much difference because I. Having gone through that intersection a lot, there's a lot of times when three cars in front of me are not turning at all.
I know, but I've seen a lot of times that there's been one or two cars in front of me. If it was there. Could have gotten, gotten over, gotten around the corner.
It's a topic for another day as we try to figure out how we're going to do it.
Moved up a little bit in priority.
This isn't a statement of priority. It's, this is just, this, these are arrangements based upon their cost.
Let me ask you on these. If I'm understanding correctly, there's three slides of CIB projects. This is the first one. So certainly we'll cover all three. Is there any questions on those, on that first list?
This is the first one, one we've been.
This is someone, okay, that's the first.
And it's just two.
This is two?
Yeah.
Okay, it's just two. Any questions on this slide?
The rest.
I don't think there are any questions. Now we got the second, third slide.
Are there any you want to go over?
Councilwoman Donnie, there's the one you were asking about, man, about the library. See, but halfway down there, the fifty grand for the library. Some of these things are new that I've completed last year that we, that we've needed to add. Obviously some smaller projects, similar projects. Burn Lane during your study, as you know, Burn Lane was built before stormwater existed. It will take a while to get that funded. That'll be like the project you saw on Old Litchfield Road last year. But it will take several years to get designed and then of course, we'll certainly pursue flood control district funds for that project. But that needs to be done. It'll take a while to get it designed and done. Questions on, Mr. Vice Mayor?
That lake lighting. If you do start considering that, try and find something that is less or more vandal proof. When we did the wall, we put lake volume in on that, around the lake and every one of them is busted and gone. None of them worked. So they were. Very easy pickings for vandals. If you can't find something, maybe it's taller.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
The last part of the CIP budget will be the contingency. I am recommending three million dollars. Two million of that is, is just for the timing of Litchfield Square. It's not a, an increase of the overall spending, but just in case they don't complete as much as they has estimated through the end of June. And it falls into next year, this covers us. So if that were the case, our beginning fund balance would be two million higher. And then every year we do budget a million in the citywide capital project contingency just for. Any unforeseen event and anytime use of contingency funds, it requires council approval. So to look at the CIP summary, eight hundred and fifty thousand in one-time revenues. Our, some of the capital, the committed capital is five point, five point five. Our needed capital is nine hundred and thirty-seven and then all of those identified projects are nine, nine million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand and then our three million contingency. So when we take the personnel, the operating and the CIP and put all that together. Now we start with an estimated beginning fund balance of just under twenty-three point eight million. We add our revenue, our budgeted revenues over expenditures of two point six. And that gives us a net of twenty-six point four. Then we add those one-time revenues of eight hundred and fifty thousand. We'll subtract our one-time committed costs of five point five. I did subtract out the necessary capital improvement of nine hundred and thirty-seven. So that gives us an estimated ending fund balance of twenty point eight million. We're required to keep fifteen percent of that on hand, so that's one point nine million and then. An additional thirty-five percent on hand of four point five million. So the unassigned fund balance of fourteen point three million, that's really the funds that you would have available. If you're considering any of those projects that we just went over.
That's where the money for the nine point three five five million comes from.
But the main takeaway from, from that summary though is, yes, there's five and a half million of committed, but four point nine of that's towards finishing Litchfield Square.
Yes.
And then, and then we're done. Yeah, so that's, that's why there's such a, you know, drop from twenty-six to twenty year over year, but there will be no more, I mean.
Yes, our big project is, is done.
Yeah.
There's still, there are still things that are not going to be finished in this part that will be needed as we go forward at some point. But they will be more self-financed by businesses going into this place.
Phase two?
What's that?
Phase.
The thing government needs all the time. Needs don't go away. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay.
Just have one, one last slide.
No, she's done. I'd like to question, let her finish.
Yeah, she's not done.
So I wanted to summarize all of this together and show you the impact of the ending fund balance and what that unassigned fund balance would look like. So for this fiscal year twenty-five projections, like we just went over, that's all that's included in the CIP. So that leaves us an ending fund balance of twenty point eight. Then in future years. I just allocated five million for capital projects, but that, you know, will just depend on future needs. It was just to have a placeholder there. I did built-in revenue assumptions for Litchfield Square starting in fiscal year twenty-six. The operating expenses, they assume normal increases and cost for Litchfield Square as everything continues to develop. The fiscal year twenty-five only includes the, the committed and necessary project, CIP projects of just under six point five million. So anything outside of that will decrease this ending fund balance. So this is more of a looking at actuals, this fiscal year twenty-five column, but as far as budgeted authority. I would recommend including that authority so council has the opportunity to make those decisions throughout the year. You know, if we do projects, it, all of it requires council approval. So it's not to spend, but it's just to authorize the budget capacity. This is a slide that I've, I've shown you all before and it was in the state of the city, just our revenues over expense, over expenses and then the impact on the fund balance. And that's the end of my presentation.
Vice Mayor, thank you. Paige, what is our mandated expenditure, expenditure limitation? Really in relation to that?
I can pull it up really fast. I don't, I don't have it in this presentation, but I'm thinking.
In years past, I think maybe prior to your time, we would build. Like a final layer that you have in this budget here, just in case something popped up or we had to. Replace public works equipment or all the police cars or something that we hadn't really thought about that came up. And if we didn't have in the budget, we didn't spend it. And so we would build some room in there so we could get closer to the expenditure limitation in case we needed it.
Yes, and I, I think that's a great idea. And so I, I would budget all that capacity for that, that really, will really bump up to our expenditure limit. It's about ten million. Over, over our operating.
Our, our, our current budget, budget, budget is close to our expenditure limit. It's not, I mean, maybe it's fifteen or twenty percent less. Probably not any more than that. It may be actually less than ten percent of what our actual statute target limit is. So we're, we will do that. We will make sure that we have expenditures budgeted to be able to come. Become, to come up with what we believe is a reasonable revenues plus our, our savings.
Well, in, in years past, when you first became mayor, developed a, a. A budget and we developed also.
And managed to budget.
Managed two.
All kinds of things.
So we had the expenditure limitation built into the budget, but we beat on staff to keep, keep way below those numbers.
And we're doing that again.
What's that?
We're going to do that again. What, whatever's happened is that the expenditure budget for all the departments, which went through first. We're going, that's, that is what used to be the old managed to budget. And so that is to try to keep an eye on what we're spending within each of the departments. The, that is just a piece of what the, the end budget will be for the toll. Because if you add in the nine point three of capital, which we won't do next year, all of it. And in three million dollars of contingency. So you're going to, we're going to be budgeting a lot more than what we expect to spend next year.
You had, did I misunderstand? You had five million built in there for just in case money?
It was three million for just in case and then there's that nine million for all of those projects.
Okay.
So it's.
And we're going to substitute the projects out for something else if we had to.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we've got enough room in there for something that may pop up.
Yes.
If we have to rebuild a lake again or something.
Yes, we should have plenty of capacity.
One of the things that happened this year is because of the timing of some of the expenses within Litchfield Square. Some of them came in this year that we didn't think they were going to come this year. We had that we're actually next year. So there's some of the capital, things that we were going to do that we had to defer to next year so that we kept within what the budget. So it, it, we, we need to do that. It's, we have to have, have the flexibility to deal with things as they change. Right. Now it, it's a little more difficult with this Litchfield Square because there's, it's such a large project. So, so it really had an outsized effect on that process.
Paige's job you've been doing is good. Good job. I mean, I've been sitting in this chair for a long, long time and the numbers that you're giving to us and the. We've got two great things happening. You know, one, you're willing to control those numbers and present it so we can understand them. We've had two great things happening, you know, one, your ability to control those numbers and present it so we can understand them. And two, what's been happening in the marketplace as we've been able to stay with this. Push toward the, the commercial surroundings as opposed to more residential, converting, you know, commercial and residential. And the revenues we thought had been. So it's a great time, great time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so the last slide says, thank you, thank you, Paige.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor. And we have a lot of other department heads here tonight.
I think we have, we have one or two, yes.
Yeah, I think.
Thank you, all the depart, all the department heads stand up. Everybody stand up as a department head.
Stand up, guys.
Stand up. Thank you for your hard work. All right, that brings us to the end of this agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn? All those favorably say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. So going through the regular meeting, does anyone need a short break before we get started on the regular meeting? We'll give time for all these wonderfully hardworking department heads to leave. All right, we'll start, we'll start without the city manager, so.
I would, yeah, I would like to just send very special thoughts. Dr. Reiner, who's a beloved community member, Lisa's father has been in the hospital for almost a month now. So I want to just offer lots of thoughts and prayers for them right now, anyway. Lots of exciting things going on in the building committee for the PW Litchfield Center. We're really looking pretty hard with council and RMAC and the whole committee, so. Including our, our, just to make sure we don't slow down in the summer. So even if we have to meet by Zoom, we're gonna keep, keep moving and get some things done, hopefully. I want to say bravo to the best sports camp for two to four year olds, which my granddaughter's in is awesome. I don't know how they do it, but hallelujah that you guys are including our rec center activities for two year olds, bless its heart, anyway. And then the home tour was again very successful, the Friday night event minus the wind. That councilman Claire's beautiful yard and house and, and wife helped support, so well done to all of that, anyway. That's all, yeah.
Great, that was McLaren.
Just to echo the, the home tour that went on, it was nice to see things happen in the greens instead of just here on this side and get a little more exposure and. I just see the excitement in the community to get around and see the homes.
That's what I'm saying. And looks, I don't think you've got Brandon Watson with us, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just said a quick report on a meeting that we had with, with Liberty Water. As you know, we've had a variety of issues with them and a variety of meetings over the last six months. And I, and the city manager and I met with them a few days ago, and I, I would say it's probably the very first meeting I can recall in decade. It was a really a positive meeting. They were responsive to the things that we needed to see happen and how we wanted to do them. Lisa, are you there?
I just muted him.
Oh, okay. So it was a very positive meeting. They, they have done a variety of things that should improve their level of service and that should. Eliminate, eliminate the problem with water pressure that happened last summer. So we hope that it's good mark, this attitude change that we've seen will mark, you know, better relationships between Liberty and the city and its residents, so. With that, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Council. First of all, I'd like to thank Paige, Paige was in charge of my absence last week, but as you know, we were able to go to Georgians, spend some time with my mom and take my kids to the first SCC football game. So that was an experience, enjoyed that, and the beach football too, but anyway, but Paige did a great job and thank you for that while I was gone. Also, staff is working on rebuilding our youth council. You may remember before COVID, we had a youth council and COVID, like so many things killed our youth council. And staff is working on bringing that back, and we're actually have an open house on the twenty second, six o'clock in the city hall conference room. And actually, we have one, one of our youth council members is here with us, that's Kel Shorts. If you guys can't tell by looking at him, he look, he might look like an RPG member, you know, if you don't, if you can't tell, so. I knew when I looked at his face, of course, he's Adam's son, so he's Adam Shorts' son. And also Ava Tadi, but I don't think she's here with us, so we appreciate the work you guys are doing, and thank you for being here with us tonight. So if you, if you can attend that meeting, please feel free to, again, on the twenty second, six o'clock. Few other things, as you know, the city charter was passed with eighty two percent vote. The city charter is now with the governor's staff awaiting signature. Paige, I discussed as far as our seven percent recommendation on raises, again, is a three percent coal, four percent merit. That is a little lower than the other cities, which are planning for eight percent. Again, that's a breakdown of three and four. Staff asserts the Sun Health DA regarding Hilltop access from D to Missouri. And there is an item on tonight's agenda for staff direction to start planning a roundabout again for that intersection. There's a lot involved in that, but so welcome any questions if there are any. That's very high level, and I, I would ask, Kelly, does anything, anything, would you like to put a plug in there for your council while you're here? Got to put you on the spot, thank you for your listen. Mayor Council, welcome any questions if there are any.
Any questions or comments? All right, we'll go ladies first.
Did you just mention the roundabout?
Yes, ma'am.
At Missouri?
Yes, ma'am.
And that, that's, is that, that's on the agenda to talk about tonight?
Council staff direction item, yes.
Does that include some of Sun Health's responsibility there too, or?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
And have we talked to them about this yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool.
So to go a little bit more in detail, what Councilor Don, he was talking about there is, you, you may remember it was in the Sun Health DA from twenty twenty, there's a lot in that document. But one of the offsites is in their document, is that if the city decides to build a roundabout at Missouri and Litchfield, Sun Health is responsible for fifty percent of the D and E. And also fifty percent of the project cost. That being said, they're not in a big hurry to build that because they don't need it yet, but we need it sooner than they do. So we were working on that, we're in discussions with Sun Helps to make, to make some revisions to that DA, and that would be a big part of that. We're also discussing one on council act as well. And but again, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to that.
Because as I understand it, which I know I've spoken to Sun Health, and they've given magic credit for this, we're no longer doing the lease, it's now a development agreement. Which everyone seems to be happy about, working on that more than the lease.
Well, the, the lease is totally separate, actually.
But they're not going to manage it right now, right?
No, basically, all the things they came to us and asked, told us they wanted to do.
Yeah.
They decided they don't do any of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fine, so we're, we're going to go.
Yeah, so no more time spending there.
The development, the development agreement changes are different.
Things need to get done in order to develop, so that's a good thing.
Well, yeah, it's, there's, you know, it covers the. property that where they've been building new C Ks and apartment houses, whatever. So they, they want some changes to that agreement, and so now we're negotiating different things that we, we would like to see changed in the agreement also.
Yeah, because they're obviously a piece of, of the house getting done, there have to be roads put in and so forth, so.
Well, they're not, they're not really, they're not directly part of that anymore at all. So it's, again, that's what I'm saying, they're just sep, this is totally separate issues now.
The roundabout we would recommend would be the main access point for the hilltop. The reason why is the historic entrance there to the old Litchfield House isn't really safe for exiting left handed, it's just there below the hill. So we would recommend a new roundabout at Litchfield and Missouri, and also a frontage road along Litchfield Road, which would connect Denny to Missouri. And that ties in the whole hilltop project along with the library, which we're going to talk about too.
Well, I guess what I'm asking too, is there, is there going to be any pushback from them? I don't know.
Could be, but they want things from us, and we want things from them, so negotiating.
Gotcha, okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Matthew, could you expand upon the note in your report about the, apparently there's. Water lines in the villages and some lines have two meters on them, there'd be a bill for twice the wire it's going through.
I would actually refer that one, Keith or Kyle, who can speak on that in more detail on that one?
Vice Mayor, we discovered seven interconnected meters that may be double metered, so the city is paying a bill. And it's eventual that the, or the other meter is also paying a bill on the same provided one. So we're in a position now where we've given them that information of the recent, pay our recent cost. It's remnant from the two thousand six to two thousand ten area where the developer built all the parks and didn't have all the services and all the extended water lines, so they doubled up.
Is there a chance of a significant credit to the city of some sort, or could you even figure it out?
That, that's my opinion to Liberty is, once we find out if there are double accounts, what does that mean for us?
That's what James.
Just, I was looking for a status update, doesn't have to happen now, it can happen next council meeting on where the Thomas projects happen.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilor James, actually, Mr. O'Connor has approached staff about that, there's been several requests, one thing he, he's asking about doing some murals there. And P and Z is going to discuss that issue, because right now we really don't have much in code on murals, if that's something we want to do. So P and Z is going to have that discussion. He's also been asking about a coffee shop and that sort of thing. There seems to be some confusion on what the permitting process would be to open coffee shops. But staff is working with him on that, on the proper process to go through for permitting new businesses, et cetera.
Is it possible to be permitting new businesses before the, the items in the, in the DA that he's supposed to fix or do are accomplished?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, those things have to be done first, sir.
First.
Yes, sir.
That's McLaren.
Matthew, the meeting you had with Liberty that went, was that before or after the public hearing that they invited everybody to?
It was after, sir.
Okay, good. And then I texted Lisa, and she's making a Russell, and she just said, thank you for the kind words.
All right, anybody, was there any other questions? Okay. Are you, are you completed? That takes us to a response to last meeting, it's called the community, and Mr. Culver made some comments, but they do not require a response. We have one request to speak, this meeting is called the community by Carl Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Carl Harton, and I am a twenty five year Litchfield Park resident. Local destruction of the city of Litchfield Park property is a crime, and as such, the perpetrator needs to be charged with that crime. Back in late March, a piece of city property was woefully destroyed by a person known to the city of Litchfield Park. But as of this date, that person has not been charged with the crime. I'm talking about the chopping down of Woody, the much beloved wooden statue that previously was located in the landscape island in the two hundred block of Laguna Drive East. That greeted passing motorists for more than twenty five years. This issue is mentioned in the city manager's report under the administration section, but it appears Mr. Williams is portraying himself as both judge and jury in this matter. I will quote from that report. Staff received complaints about a carved statue being removed from a city median. A citizen requested a landscaper who was working in a surrounding yard to think of removing the statue, as she was worried about her children being injured on it. The landscaper removed the statue at her request. A few citizens have requested criminal charges be filed against the homeowner to request it be removed. Staff will be working on the, with the citizen that requested the statue be removed to rectify this issue, such as planting a new tree, placing a new carving, et cetera. However, it's not within the city manager's nor his staff's purview to make that determination. The city needs to criminally charge the individual responsible for initiating the removal of the statue. And allow the courts to decide the punishment for this crime. Otherwise, I should be allowed to unilaterally deem the playground equipment at Stag's Park as a possible hazard to my grandchildren. And have that equipment removed without consequence. Therefore, I demand to know the name of the individual responsible for initiating the removal of the city owned statue. I demand to know the name of the landscape maintainer for actually, responsible for actually removing the city owned statue. And I demand to know the economic reiteration offered and or paid to the landscape maintainer while removing the city owned statue. This matter sets a dangerous precedent if allowed to go unprosecuted. I look forward to hearing the city's modified action in this matter and learning that all responsible individuals have been charged with their crimes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Harton, thank you for your comments, sir. Um, so several things on this project, so I'm sorry, that's right, I can't, sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, James.
Yeah, we can't, we really can't respond to you as far as, we will make a formal response to you at the next meeting. In the next meeting, but if you're around later or sometime when we can talk, I'll tell you what's happening.
Thank you, Mr. Harton.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the presentations. We have a building safety month proclamation and a professional municipal clerks week proclamation, both of which are in your packet. I have them here, and we have a buildings, our building. Department head here who assumes is going to receive this proclamation, is that why you're here, Brian, or just? If you'll come up, I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but if you come up, I will. Send it to you as our buildings, safety department head. Congratulations, I appreciate what you do for our community. This is building safety month, and so we want to keep Brian in, in our thoughts as he goes about making sure that our buildings are safe in the community. Our next proclamation is to honor our professional clerk. We appreciate all that the clerk does, and we have a proclamation for her. So if you want to come around, come up, I'm, I'm, whatever the easiest way for you to get here is. Even though the clerks do so much for us, in the pecking order of clerks and building safety people, the clerks only get one week of recognition while the building safety people get a month. So I want to recognize your contribution to our city, we appreciate everything you do. Okay.
And the city attorney.
The city attorney gets it out.
The city attorney proclamation will be coming next. Nobody ever recognizes the, the attorney, so.
We do recognize you, we recognize you, but we don't complain about it. Okay, now the Goodyear Fire Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm a full deputy chief of the Goodyear Fires Department. Tonight I have the fire report for you from March of two thousand twenty four. In March, we received a total of eighty two calls for service, that's up eleven calls from February and up seventeen from March of twenty three, so a twenty six percent increase. Of those eighty two calls for service, seventy three were EMS, five of them being fire accidents. We had one report of a hazardous situation and one alarm malfunction, so it was pretty good. Our community response unit responded to three of those incidents, and we did twenty one occupancy inspections. For the special locations that, that we always talk about, the Loma had a total of twelve calls for service. And eleven of those resulted in transport. Four of them were, were falls, and one of them was a false alarm, the fire system. Hacienda had seventeen total calls for service, and twelve of those were transported to the hospital, nine of them were falls, and six of those falls were transported to the hospital. Nine of them were falls and six of those falls were transported to the hospital. Any questions?
Probably lots of questions, probably not for this forum. No, no questions.
Alright.
Yeah, we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
For what you guys do for our community, it's, it does not go unnoticed, we appreciate all their efforts.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, now the Avonale Police Department says that we have Sergeant Ray Embercare. Glad to see you, Sergeant.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you. Sergeant Ray, Avonale Police Department, we got the March twenty twenty-four issue report. We had two hundred and eighty-five calls for service. Out of those, fifty-four percent of them were offer-initiated, forty-six percent were citizen-initiated. Compared to March of last year, we had probably two hundred and eighty-four calls, so circa the same percentage, almost spot on, March twenty-three to March twenty-four. Now, we had thirty-four traffic stops, sixty-eight business checks, thirteen school zones, fourteen speed details. We also had five block alerts for the month. Out of the five block alerts, there were three of them were stolen vehicles. We were able to find all three stolen vehicles and recover those. One came off of Village Parkway in Camelback, we found that occupied. Rest of the driver also found drugs on him as well. The other one was unoccupied and we found it stolen out of Peoria, just left in Litchfield Park, we recovered that one. And then the third one was a U-Haul that was never returned, so reported stolen, but kind of a civil slash stolen situation there. And the other two block alerts were sex offender, same person that lives in the community there, so we had multiple alerts, but it's the same vehicle. Any questions?
Questions, Council?
Significant decrease in traffic this past month over the previous two. It was just lesser attention, was there a change of?
A little bit of everything. We always make it, whether one of our top priorities is traffic. We have a lot of busy, busy calls that tie up a lot of officer time, so sometimes when we get those calls that require a lot of time, we don't have as much patrol time to do as many stops. So still a high priority, but just not the time to be at the block slots we did the month before.
Understood. Well, we know there's lots, this is, this is a target-rich environment on Camelback for speeders, so whenever they have an extra moment.
Absolutely. And I think you'll see for the April one, it's, we've already done more this month than last month, we had a little bit more time this month. So I think it was just the types of calls we had just didn't give us the opportunity to do as much traffic as we normally do.
It is having an impact, and we can definitely feel the speeds are lower than they were, so we appreciate all the work you guys are putting into.
Thank you.
Are we getting comments from Litchfield Green citizens or anyways?
Nothing positive.
Does it, does it decrease?
Uh, well, it's not. The comments that I have received, as I see people who live over there, I mean, there's, it's not, not enough difference to, you know. It doesn't fix the problem.
It's banned, eh?
Yeah, it's banned, it helps, but it's, it's banned. Romic, did you have a question or comment?
No.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, thank you for your service, your guys' service, we appreciate everything they do.
Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to our staff reports. We'll start with a report from Finance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have the March two thousand twenty-four finance report. We'll start with sales tax. I mentioned earlier during the budget presentation that sales tax was starting to level out. So this March, over last March, was nearly flat, about four thousand dollars under. Retail sales were down two percent, but online sales were up thirty-three percent, so it was nearly a wash. Restaurants were down a percent, utilities down ten, rentals were up twelve, and then all other was down nine. But net of that was nearly flat. We are still eight percent over last year. And then our construction sales tax revenue was down fourteen percent this month over la, this March over last March. Moving on to general fund revenues. Revenues collected through the end of March are just under thirteen million or eighty-six percent of budget estimates. And our general fund expenditures are at just under eight point nine million or seventy-three percent of expenditures. So net general fund operations through the end of March are just over four million. I, I already mentioned this earlier, but there will be a budget adjustment I'll, I'll bring to you maybe next month or the following month for IT and possibly city attorney. We just had a lot, a lot more legal costs this year, especially with the charter and the election. Our one-time construction sales tax through the end of March is six hundred and forty-three thousand. We did receive a payment from Maricopa County Flood Control for the Storm Dream Project, just under one point nine. And we've spent three hundred and thirty thousand on capital, and I've started to recognize some of the transfers that will need to be made to the Litchfield Square Fund. So that leaves an ending fund balance of thirty-one point eight million. The detail for rec and special events is in your packet. I won't go through any of that detail unless there's any questions. Like, I'll just point out, the cost recovery for rec through March is seventy percent and ninety-two percent for special events. Moving on to our special revenue funds, HERF revenue through March is just under three hundred and eighty-eight thousand or seventy-two percent of budget. So it's likely overall will be three percent under budget on our HERF revenues. We have generated just under thirty-nine thousand in revenue. Expenditures through March are just over fifty-two thousand, but this is the, the funds that we will use for, for the Dyther Indian School Road Project. So ending fund balance at the end of March is one point two million. Litchfield Square through the end of March, we're at seven point nine million. If their schedule stays on track that they provided us, we should hit this full seventeen point four million at the end of June. Our streetlight improvement districts, revenue is at a hundred and forty-nine thousand, expenditures are at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. But we're, March collections are, are now starting to come in, so we'll see that swing back the other way, most likely next month. Our court enhancement fee, our fund has collected forty-one hundred dollars. We've spent eighteen thousand two ninety-one. So ending fund balance is sixty-three thousand seven sixty-three, but as I mentioned earlier, this should be right at fifty-five thousand at the end of June. So next year we won't see any expenses in this fund. Bringing us to our total fund balance for all funds is thirty-five point three million, with thirty-one point eight of that in the general fund and twenty-five point seven of that unassigned. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions from Council? Okay, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
We'll go on to our capital improvement projects update. Well, you got up there quickly.
Not very quiet, though. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sorry I'm fighting with sciences today, so apologize ahead for Camelback Park. We had a meeting, a public meeting last month with very good showing. We also had the completion of our online survey with a hundred and twenty-six respondents to a very good feedback on the proposed configuration for Camelback Park. Right now, the consultant is moving into third percent design plan. I actually had a meeting with them today, incorporating the feedback from the public and RPG. So we'll move, we'll hopefully have an update next month, the third percent plans are being reviewed and moving on to a pre-final designs. We also got the EPS group, another on call, completed a traffic study for the Inmaeva involving the speed humps that we proposed at the park. They support the, the findings that we do need the two speed humps on either side of the speed humps, sorry, on either side of the park, given its twenty-five mile per hour speed limit and the diagonal part. Camelback Park Premier Ball, that's on the agenda tonight for discussion. So we're moving on with the consultant who has completed their survey of the backyard of all the residents along Dyther Road. And they're incorporating that into the design. We have also coordinated with McDOT, as I brought forward last month, the right-of-way along Dyther is primarily belongs to McDOT, discussions with them. More or less, they said if you want it, take it. So they wanna hand out as much right-of-way and annex in the city as possible. We will come up with a reasonable area for the design and construction to be completed without taking the DSRO themselves, which they asked us to do, and we politely declined. The right-turn lane is also parallel on the west side, you know, the right-turn lane for eastbound Camelback to South. Dyther Art Media School reconstruction, mentioned that a few times earlier in the meeting, that we, I've received final plans from the consultant. I also received a rough order magnitude engineer's estimate that gave me a little bit of shock that their estimate came in at over a million dollars. Come to find out, they overestimated quite a few line items to be conservative, a little too conservative for my blood. So I'm actually having another contractor to look at it. We received a rough order magnitude a year ago of five hundred and ninety thousand, so I'm hoping we'll find that it were common ground somewhere in the middle, so we don't spend all pages hurtfully. In one products, public facility, public works facility, we do have a, we reached out to a steel building manufacturer for an estimate. We do have our architect who created the conceptual site plan, gave us an estimate for a brick-and-mortar building, CMU construction. We reach out to Bunker Steel, who does estimates on preliminary and conceptual designs. And I've heard, heard back from them today, and they're working on a first worth of cost for us to consider and prepare the two different design types, or construction types. Bird Lane Speed Humps, we talked about that last month, that there was a visibility concern, so Paul Works did a great job immobilizing faster than speed government, and we're getting good feedback of nighttime vision of those speed humps. And the fact that they're very traversable to all types of vehicles is good news. Finally, Board Watch Pathway Connections, we are moving forward with that project. We received a design proposal from our on-call consultant to complete the plans and have coordination with the city of Goodyear, because we have to submit to them for a permit. We also have to submit to Flood Control County because Board Watch is a flood rate. So they just need to get their blessing on the impacts which shouldn't affect the flowway. With that, that is all on my report. You have any questions?
Mr. Vice Mayor. You mentioned the Camelback Park speed study at twenty-five miles an hour justified speed bumps. Weren't we talking about going below twenty-five miles an hour in that area? Are we gonna leave it at twenty-five? Speed bumps, twenty-five mile an hour speed bumps, if you dare, are we gonna lower it to something lower, or?
So, Vice Mayor, so in talking to the consultant, anything above fifteen miles an hour would, he would recommend the speed humps with the diagonal parking that we are proposing. So we can elect to modify that portion of the speed limit, or the speed humps themselves generally reduce speed because there's management notification that somebody knows they're going over two in the road. That was what the consultant said. We can also, we also actually have a justification to include additional speed humps further south if we so desire to close the site distance will allow for it in that twenty-five mile an hour speed, which also directly and indirectly reduces speed anyways. So we can entertain reducing the speed, but the speed humps will create a safe zone that will work well with proposing the park. We leave that.
But the studies say we can go down to fifteen miles an hour, is that?
Anything above fifteen, he would recommend speed humps anyways, just because fifteen miles an hour versus twenty-five is just a sign.
Fifteen is a possibility, but maybe not necessary till we try it out.
Exactly.
The speed humps that you're looking at, are they like the the speed humps on Bird Lane that are to the west, or the speed humps that are to the east?
Vice Mayor, they're to the east, the drainage area, the drainage contributing area doesn't, from what we can tell, create a drainage problem. So we're gonna recommend the traditional paved speed humps that were originally installed further to the east.
Just a, just an observation, that the speed that a car will want to generally go across the, the ones that are on the west versus the ones on the east, in the west, it's about five miles an hour or less. So it would slow, be much more effective at slowing people down to fifteen than the ones that are in the east.
They're more abrupt, right?
They're more abrupt, and it's, I mean, it's comfortable going on fifteen miles an hour, you're okay, sixteen, seventeen. But the other ones are only two to five. So if you wanna really, if we really wanna slow things down, probably better use the, the style that's on the west, the west part of Bird Lane.
And you're just putting in two, and they're by the park?
Neither side, just before the park, right by our listed in my house. Mr. Mayor, there's honestly doesn't, according to the consultant, a speed bump is a speed bump, so we can provide whatever product.
Yeah, just as a user, as a user of the two speed humps, one is a lot, makes you go a lot slower than the other one. And the modifications that you made for lighting, reflectors, and, you know, it's tremendously improved nighttime awareness of those being there, I mean, you can see them now easily, so I appreciate what you did to that. And the modifications you did for the golf carts, to be able to go around them, also, you can't go around them very fast, but you're not you know, the speed humps themselves are very difficult on a golf cart, so being able to avoid them like that, it really, it makes it a lot better situation, so thank you.
I would just say, when I go over those speed bumps, I think of your golf clubs flying out of your.
That's why you gotta go around them.
Yeah, like, oh, they go to golf club again.
It wasn't just me. There are a lot of different people in golf carts with those.
Get that picture every time.
Yeah, good, I'm glad you get it. Okay, anything else? Any other questions? Alright, so we'll go on to the contamination report.
Vice Mayor, not a lot of movement on PGA items. What I can report on is in the coming days in May, specifically on May seventh, the City of Goodyear Rec Center at five thirty PM, PGA North and South is having the EPA's posting a hybrid community action group for several hours. And what that is, is an opportunity for the public to come out, ask questions, and see the real-time information on the presentation that the consultants and EPA are gonna put on. They wanted us to get that up to the community. I've been to a couple in the years, and very informal, so that is happening in the rec center, the good City Goodyear Rec Center on the street the seventh of May, five thirty. The following day, PGA North Semi-Annual Technical Meeting, excuse me, Wednesday, the, the eighth is actually occurring at the City of Goodyear Waste Water Treatment Plant at nine AM. That is an all-day affair from nine to approximately five, and that is very specific to the north, which is the plume that affects or has affected the City of Litchfield Park. That is a very, much more specific technical meeting. I've also been to a few of those. They are unique because it is high-level and low, and very specific data over the last year. Sometimes they'll be true than that, but I wanted to put those two out there for City Council, residents. And with regards to Luke Air Force Base, we have not received the revised IGA. They've had it for several weeks since prior to the last council meeting. It's a third iteration, unlike the expected any day now. And hopefully we can have that so reviewed, approved, and signed by the. So with that, any questions?
Questions?
What's the status of us checking our own wells in that hole? I mean, we were gonna do that, right, for T-Pob?
Councilmember, we did, we actually tested a T-Verdi well on November. And the results were they were lower than the recently. They were lower than the uh recently published M C L limits, um but right there. So what PGA has actually requested to receive the information and they've opened dialogue to. Potentially test our well, but then we're in a very unique situation where. It's either PGA or loop the uh that has contaminated the well. So. Well, it's not as obvious as if you're in your further net closer to the the Goodyear Airport or south of I town. Or from north of Calabac, where the plume is estimated from Luke to be coming from. So we're somewhere in the middle. So we've opened our on both sides and the test that we did in uh November was done by the same company that does all P J's.
Just as a piece of information that we discussed with Liberty when they came into the meeting. The uh. The federal government has actually now established an M C L for PFOS. So there's a, there is a number now that has to be met. And the the requirement to meet the number doesn't really come into play until I think they said twenty twenty-seven. But between now and twenty twenty-seven, there are a number of things that have to happen. And they're, they are working on it. Um, we had suggested to them, and I think they're gonna take us up on putting together informational. Like a pamphlet, but an informational piece that will put in our city line and put on our on our website. So that we let our residents know what's going on and and what, you know, what the uh what what their wells look like and the steps that they're taking to, you know, to. Make sure that they meet these requirements as required by the federal government. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith, I'm confused. You say about Luke's contaminants and. The old Navy bases and you know dynamics contaminants. Coming together. I thought those were different products, ones from firefighting home and ones in manufacturing during Vietnam and it. And stuff they were using for cleanings and.
But they're totally, they're totally different.
Yeah.
One is is.
So why can't you go? Yeah, ones that solve the ones from the firefighting problem. So why are you saying they can't tell who did? What to our well?
Mr. Vice Mayor, so in sitting in a lot of the uh technical meetings, PGA has opened the dialogue that there was potential PFOS. From the PGA North, so yeah, so that's, they've actually created. Uh a lot of commu- internal communications and uh state border communications. Um they've actually reached out to all cities, including let's see, the true park to request. Well, data result because they're they're starting the process to see which wells have have generated PFOS. Um this very early stages, they just started this within a few months. And so uh. My understanding is that there is a growing, even though it's very small, it's starting to get gain a little traction, concern that the. South sites, the the PGA South and North had some PFOS contamination.
Where where would it come from? Were they using those?
Could have come from.
Yeah, the Navy base.
At least they were using those before nineteen sixty?
PFOS has uh come in dozens of formats, um and a lot of times they didn't even know what was in some of the chemicals and how they react to different chemicals. Uh so my understanding is that they were, because it was the sixties, but there was some contaminations after that. That contributed to the work in South PGA.
Cause we've all been looking for, what's the word for for? Yeah, P C E basically.
Yeah, C and.
Well, they haven't looked at your PFOS.
Yeah. Okay.
Like I said, it's early stages. They're requesting data from all municipalities, all the well, and all the wells within each municipality in the general area of the plumes. And they're going to start doing their. Data monitoring and their data mapping, but.
Was all the analysis that's been done from the plume down south? Was there never any analysis for other contaminants other than the T C Es or the percolates or whatever the hell they? What were coming out of those plants?
There there is a list, uh it's, those are the two. Big, big uh items, the ones that spread and enter the different uh substrate, uh but there were various types. There's. Different oils, the different uh types of stages of oils, they they're more concentrated closer to the sources. You know, spread out like the P C did and the Florida did. So there is quite a few on the list for each of those sites. They just miss of the magnitude.
Yeah, we don't, there's no, there is no data that has that shows any contamination from the original superfund site in our lake well. Our lake well was never contaminated by the the main uh solvents that were part of the the PGA plume that's. Called the North Room. The North would never got the Litchfield Park. Okay, so. We'll just say, it it would be if you're gonna, if you were gonna argue where where it may have come from, it's hard to argue that it came from the from the PGA that is. Uh north contamination because none of the other contamination doctors.
Right.
So it it did PFOS get to us for some reason? Uh and who knows, maybe it swims differently, but I doubt it. I think it probably did not come from PGA North. Uh same thing in Avondale, that never PGA North never got in to the water wells in Avondale. There was a lot of work done to prevent all that and it virtually was successful. So again, if if Avondale has something in there. In their water wells, it's, I don't see how it possibly have come from PGA North, but they need to look at it. Yeah, okay.
Keep it posted.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
You.
Federal projects up to the Mr. Bull. Thank you, Mayor. Uh council, just to add, we probably get in the literal story, just to add on to what Matthew was talking about regarding. The Thomas Mixed Juice Project, we are taking uh. Age, the first phase of that product, the design of the wheel. On May second, it includes the components that Matthew mentioned, and there's some other things that we're working on with P and Z. Also in May, their P and Z's May fourteenth meeting. So there is progress being made with the owner. Regarding the actual square, we got a few updates tonight. Keith must have taken my notes.
That's what happens when you get something quick and quietly.
Yeah. Here we go. Um. I'll start basically from north to south. So Old Litchfield Road, uh last meeting, I gave an update to council on. The landscape median modifications are occurring. Uh east of lots five, six and seven and adjacent to uh Village Parkway. This is a map. Thank you, Maria, for putting that up there. This is a exhibit from EPS group that shows the lot numbers and if I'd be good for reference purposes for council tonight as well as the audience. Uh most of the concrete work is done. So if you travel in that area, either car or bicycle walk, you can start to see the landscape median modifications. There will be a left turn, a median for northbound to westbound uh travel at Village Parkway. Um I. Coincidentally, um had a communication with the Avondale Postmaster yesterday in this area. The postmaster is anxious to relocate the mailbox. Uh which was removed to uh accommodate the landscape median modifications. I told them that uh when the postmaster is ready, uh they can reinstall. The mailbox, the concrete pad that Keith has approved has been poured. It's now uh the mailbox will be ADA accessible once. The post office reinstalls the mailbox. So hopefully that'll happen here pretty quick. Landscaping in this area right around uh the Village Parkway intersection, which is right here. There was some landscape restoration that occurred last week. So there was two new. Date homes that were planted last week along with two citrus trees. It's that alternating landscape theme concept that's been part of the true park for decades. So it's the alternating fan home. Citrus, fan palm citrus. So if you're traveling in that area, you should see some new plant material. Litchfield Square Park since uh. Last meeting, uh most of the Mondell pines have been installed and planted in the park. Restroom building number one in the park, which is right here off of Village Parkway. That's under construction or building official. He's just got his award and he's out there making inspections when they're called in. Um Aiken Gardner is the general contractor along with Blue Wave Construction. They anticipate that stem walls and uh some vertical constructions should be occurring sometime this month. So. I have seen the block. Uh deliver on pallets and hopefully the the walls will start going up. Restroom building two. Is on Desert Avenue, just north of Honeysuckle and south of Village Parkway. That restroom building is also under construction. Uh most of the utility work, electrical service from A P S has brought it being brought up. Uh into uh that site. Uh restroom building two, the construction timeframe for that, it's about two months behind. The status of restroom building one, it's not behind schedule, it's just lagging, if you will. About two months behind the work that's happening on restroom building number one. Last week, Keith and I were at RPG uh on various topics. I presented the. Just an update on the square in general and also the literal square park. And I was asking RPG for their input on, uh we're gonna have a pretty significant place structure. Up on Village Parkway and we wanna cover that with shade sails. So uh I presented some uh samples from our vendor um and what RP RPG agreed on. And appreciate Tricia's help last week and Patrick's. Um is a more durable shade sail. There's some pretty significant spans between the vertical posts to cover um. Provide the shade cover to the play structures. So the vendor was recommending a higher grade. Um shade sail that would be um. More weather resistant, if you will. The color is kind of a sand color, which is in keeping with what we've done elsewhere in our other parks in the city. Loma Avenue, this is the new. Street uh located west of City Hall with the Wiglum. Most of the concrete work uh between Honeysuckle. And Wiglum Boulevard has been poured. If you go out there, whether you're walking. Riding your bike, golf cart, uh driving by, you can start to see the, we'll have um some on-street parking, angled parking on both sides of. Uh. Loma. And yesterday, uh Aiken Gardner was out there forming what will be the permanent um. Driveway approach for the employee parking area north of City Hall. So. Uh lots of uh activity taking place. West of City Hall. Date homes were planted in that area. Um there is a new traffic circle, not a roundabout, it's uh Honeysuckle. In Loma, um when the date homes went in a week or two ago, um it made a really significant positive impact. They're they're pretty dramatic. Look, these are the um very um. Uh attractive date homes. Um I think there's probably eight that have been planted so far, but it it started to really take shape in the square. Uh street lights, uh there's fifty-eight street lights that have been installed uh overall in the square. A question came up, I think at the last council meeting, how are those being lit? Uh I checked with the. The Aiken Gardner subcontractor, which is served in electric. They told me that it'll be on a photovoltaic. System. So basically dust to dawn. Um so um that's pretty much the update on. The square and uh happy to answer any questions that council might have tonight.
Question. Let's roll that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um and we talked a while back about slowly opening some of this up and moving the fencing to the west. Now, the west is where we have a large pile of dirt, which I think I talked to Matthew about. That's the basis for the for the train station going on. But however, everything looks to me to the east is all is all done, other than the area just south of the church. Can, when do you think you'll start moving some of that fencing? Or opening things up?
Yeah, Mayor, uh Councilwoman, excellent question. So the dirt stockpile that you mentioned, you're correct, that will be. Uh it's starting, if there was a pretty significant stockpile. A few months ago, it was removed. Um now it's back again. And Keith will be using that uh to take up to the hilltop for the base for the train depot. And Aiken Gardner is aware of that. So that's a detail we're working out. Regarding the temporary construction fencing, that is something that we're working on with uh Aiken Gardner. You're correct, Village Parkway um in this area. Um between Old Litchfield Road and uh Desert. That's the one area where we have not gotten a uh request from Aiken Gardner for a final inspection. Uh Kyle and Keith and I have walked. This section of Village Parkway from the Litchfield Road to uh Desert. Um we've accepted that portion of the street for landscape maintenance. Uh but that's a question I I certainly need to get with Matthew and Keith and Kyle on when we can open up some streets.
Thank you.
The grass that uh that that's been installed in the park, is it, is all of the grass area covered with grass now?
Mayor, uh council, so most of the grass that you're seeing is lot age is the part. Most of the grass is in, there's some touch-up work uh where the future amphitheater. Uh will go in. Um during the C F P discussion, budget discussion, definitely. Earlier tonight, some of the future projects, um we're trying to create an edge uh treatment uh where. Like future projects, whether it be the amphitheater or the bandstand, et cetera. Basically have a finished appearance when the park opens around Labor Day. Most of the sod is is installed. There is some some work that uh the subcontractor, landscape contractors. S D L landscaping and we're working with them to finish it.
The intention, the intention is that all all of the area along. Desert, uh that's all gonna be grass.
Correct.
And the grass will extend all the way down to where the playground is.
That's correct.
No, when I when I drive on Honeysuckle and I look across there. It, you know, it doesn't look like the grass goes all the way to uh.
I don't have it with me tonight, but at the state of the city, one of the exhibits was the um. Concept plan for the park. And the Palm Plaza is the area. On the south side of Village Parkway, on the east side of uh Loma. That area will not get any turf. It's primarily hardscape, so the pavement is concrete.
It's Village Parkway and Desert. That that corner will get sod.
Correct. It'll get uh either a combination sod or decomposed granite. It it will not be bare dirt. So we're gonna have a finished dust-free. Uh finish of some sort there when the park opens up.
Cause that that corner where the where eventually we might have some sort of amphitheater built or whatever. That corner is still, it's in my mind, I thought we were gonna use that corner for things like concert in the park or. Some of our festivals and things so that. I mean, there needs, there needs to be something that's friendly to, you know, be used for those kinds of things. Those kind of events.
I'll make note of that and we'll we'll definitely, we meet weekly as council knows that they can garden day, the meeting tomorrow morning. And uh we'll be discussing that as well. Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Okay.
Report. Uh you have a, you have a, excuse me, you have a report on the magistrate court in your packet. So that competes completes that item in our agenda. Do you have any questions about magistrate court given the city manager? Uh consent agenda items nine, A through G, is there any men, member of the council that we should take any item off of the consent agenda?
I do.
Got it?
Yeah, I still would like to talk about, where is it near the roundabout? Which one's that one?
E. E? Okay. Any other item that which did anyone wishes to take off the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to adopt consent items nine A through G, except E? Second, second. Others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, those items are adopted. So your question about item E is.
Can I actually ask a question? Sorry, I I read further, just about um. Ask and suddent Charnetsky, an architectural thing, is that for projects that we're gonna be doing? We're asking.
For the library.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
It it would also be for the, for South Public Worksfield and Councilman Don.
Okay.
Okay, so item E, you had one, you had a question or you won?
Yeah, so I'm still trying to understand this. So what we're seeing here is, and and we saw in the budget, there's like three hundred thousand dollars put in for traffic. A study for the roundabout and so forth, right? For Missouri and Lit- and.
Now, Councilman Don, what this item is for is basically council staff direction, just to start the process and planning a roundabout for Litchfield and Missouri. Of course, it it takes some time, of course, to plant, to design, engineer a roundabout.
Right.
A big part of this, as we discussed earlier, will be the Sun Health Agreement.
Right.
Again, it's in the Sun Health Agreement from two thousand twenty, that they're responsible for a certain percentage of the of the design, engineering, and also the construction. But it's dependent upon the speed of their project. The problem with that is that doesn't work for us. Cause as you know, the hilltop is developing faster than the northern half of Sun Health is. Alright, so we need to speed up that process. As the mayor said, though, there are certain things that we need from Sun Health. There are certainly things that Sun Health needs from us. So there is some negotiation to be done. There's some points going back and forth right now between the parties on those things. Um as before, so one of my major issues on this, I think, again, that the historical interest of the hilltop isn't safe. Thus, I think it needs to be either at Denny or at the Litchfield, Missouri Roundabout, one of the two with a frontage road along Litchfield Road. One thing we would ask of Sun Health is they provide enough right-of-way for us to put in a frontage road that would run alongside Litchfield Road. Um you may remember also, so Denny, there was a crossing Panda Express, it was actually built wrong. And it has to be moved to line up with that entrance at Panda Express. There is a possibility of a light there. Um, excuse me. That being said, if there is ever a signal built at Denny and Litchfield, it could be timed to be read at the same time as Calabac is agreeing at the same time, et cetera, so they coordinate. So that's one thing. And as C- uh Councilman James was asking earlier, that's the one where there is money in there for that signal, for the one at at Fry's.
Mm-hmm.
Fry's paid some funds when that was built.
Yeah.
But the main thing on this is just so staff could start planning for a roundabout, so we know there's support here to start moving toward this goal. Cause it takes some time, again, to do D and E, et cetera, for a roundabout.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just concerned because I'm becoming heavily involved in what's going up on the hill now, a little more so than normal, and I just wanna make sure I understand all the stuff.
The the roundabout, the roundabout at Missouri is not a good deal because we don't own that intersection. We own a piece, we own about half of the intersection.
So Sun Health owns the other?
Sun Health doesn't own anything. It's it's city, it's in the city, about half of that intersection is in the city. Half of it's in the county and a piece of it is actually in Glendale because of their strip.
Right.
So the first thing that we have to do is we have to get enough of a drawing of this of this thing and design of this thing. So that we can go to the county and we can go to Glendale and see if they will accept it.
Gotcha.
Cause if they say no, then there won't be a round, there won't be a roundabout there.
Okay.
So that's the very first thing that has to happen, and that's what we're doing here, is we're getting enough, getting authorization from council, so we can do enough of the drawings and.
Gotcha.
So we can actually say, this is what we wanna build.
Thank you.
Any other questions about E? Okay, is there a motion to adopt item nine E?
Sure. Second.
Any discussion? Always in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, nine E is adopted. Now, we're gonna go to business and out of courtesy to our, to a former mayor who has been here all night listening to us. Who would like to speak about item ten E, we're gonna move ten E up on the uh business agenda, to be the first item we consider. So we'll have a presentation by Mr. Keith Durant.
Mr. Mayor, this is council. Uh this item, discussing the uh perimeter wall adjacent to the Camelback Park and along the Dice Art uh section. The exhibits on the screen are the same ones in the packet, uses to illustrate discussion. Uh proposed walls, as the the city has a program that uh rejuvenates, replaces block walls around the original square. Uh this section of the project. Is hopefully the second to the last of the uh perimeter wall projects and not an additional one further south incoming uh this year. Proposed wall section, replace the existing block wall along the south side of Camelback, um and on like east, uh the west side of Dice Art along. Camelback Park, move it approximately twenty-five feet out to the north and to the east towards Dice Art Road. And along the areas of the residential parcels, replace in kind location of the back wall. The wall will be very similar in aesthetics and uh structural characteristics as other replaced sections of the wall on Camelback and Litchfield Road. The shift of this wall on Camelback Park appro- uh increases the park area approximately one acre. And as we reported on the Camelback Park project, we're going to look to uh utilize those areas in many ways. For discussion and direction tonight, our consideration of the uh top two prevailing options for the uh perimeter wall section along Camelback Park. The uh the option one, option two are a result of public outreach uh coordination with staff and other members of the community. Uh the uh I can tell you that the uh public survey was very inter- was very informative. Uh we provided four options in the public survey, along with the opportunity to provide written feedback. Uh the four options were solid all the way around. Uh the option one, as you see here, there's an option two um that had, that has these uh. Or obviously that had these sections and a fourth option that had a lot more view fence. Uh the solid wall and the option had a lot more view fence were resoundingly at the bottom of the list. With option one, option two uh securing most of the votes as um for positive. Option one, sorry, go back one more, sorry, Henry. Option one only has the view fence section along the fairway and the section of that view wall are proposed to begin and end uh within a corridor that. Is outlined by the uh homes on either side and at an angle based on the survey, so that when vehicles are driving. More or less, they can see down the fairway and they're not being intrusive into uh seeing people's uh the residences. Option two is this exact same one, except there is a proposal for smaller defense sections. Uh option two, quickly go to the fourth image, uh one more. Option two, the smaller defense sections will look something like this, where it's uh debate, we're debating on whether it is a section that is four feet or six feet. And according to uh feedback received at RPG uh last week. Um there is a proposal to decrease the size of that solid section, to put a little bit more view into it. Uh that's good, we're considering that. Uh and we'll take that back to RPG um for that consideration. Go back one more, please, Henry. Otherwise, the view section uh along the fairway will look something like this, which is a picture that isn't taken from Turtle Park and the solid section of the remaining. Uh staff recommends uh selecting option two, uh secured most of the positive uh feedback from the public. Uh it also allows us flexibility to the uh view sections uh based on other aesthetic elements where we might be able to. Uh place trees on on sides or the generally, generally near the openings to reduce the view in, the view out. Uh we'll play with that as we move through the final design. Again, staff recommends uh option two and uh we're asking to council, similar to what we asked last month for Camelback Park. Is to uh approve or final design, construction uh with uh this perimeter wall section. Open up to any questions?
Just, you know, just a couple of, couple of points, or say, before we get too far along here. The item that's something that's said before us tonight is to finish the design, either as option one or option two. And go out and maybe get some bids. It is not to build the wall. And the wall is not uh being authorized here for for building. We will have to come back to the council and the council will figure out whether we wanna spend the money to build the wall. But we need to get the design done before we can even have an idea of what the walls are gonna cost. Okay, the other thing is that the pictures that are up there of this, of this wall that are from uh Turtle Park. Are a lot shorter wall than what it's gonna end up being along Camelback. If you think about it, as you drive along Camelback, that's, that wall is, I don't know, nine or ten feet tall. It's huge. Whereas the wall along Indian School is maybe six and a half feet, seven feet. So you just gotta keep that in mind, it's gonna be a lot more massive. Uh structure and you go along the park. The the park is really, you know, as you drive, as you drive Dylan away on curve. The view of the park is gonna be dramatically different with a ten-foot wall there. So we just need to keep that in mind.
The section here, as I mentioned, uh along Turtle Park has the outside two dimensions, that's section varies. That's where the eight to nine feet will come from.
Yeah, so it's just, it it just, if you picture it, I don't want you to be approving something that is not gonna be exactly, it's not gonna be what it's gonna look like.
So can you put up the picture of the wall you you're recommending? Which, which one of these visuals? Is it the, 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 this one?
This one is for the small section openings, we'll have approximately five of them in various locations.
So you have view wall that looks like the Turtle Park for the golf course, basically?
Option two. So this will be the view section, very similar to Turtle Park. Anything in turquoise is solid, and then the red squares are that view section, it's about four feet wide.
And nobody liked all what you have at Turtle Park, all view?
Uh that one was about equal to the solid wall, which was similar.
The people didn't really, did not like it.
The neighbors didn't like it? They wanted some blockage?
Really, because I mean, you're looking across at Carl's Jr. or, you know.
Yeah, okay.
That pizza, I don't know, whatever's across there, just, it's not, you know, it's not the same as at. At Turtle Park, you look on the view you have is actually, it's pretty nice, but this is not quite the same.
To also clarify, uh when I do talk about the other two sections of walls that have the lower voting, there were very passionate comments for um such as the solid wall. So there were a lot, there were many people that were very passionate about the solid wall, but their numbers were lower.
And it's about security and people like the security of the solid wall. And then, and we we have had, you know, literally people climbing over these walls. Not, you know, not so much when you get to this new style, it's almost tempting call, but you know, if it's shorter, you know, you you, it's not as secure. Other, Councilman Claire?
Are are we set in stone on the the tubular metal look? It just seems so dated with us doing so much to modernize and through Litchfield Square. I mean, there are elements that we could put in those view spaces that would make it look. Much newer and still hold the character of Litchfield Park. That tubular stuff looks thirty years old before you install it.
Councilmember Claire, uh the, I can tell you the final details of that overtime.
I like it.
The final, final details, it honestly, the uh as long as the rod iron is generally the same, you know, spacing, then the design will be the same. The aesthetics is something that can work out closer to the final design, where we might bring a more completed. Set of plans to the public or to back the council where we can have options for the um view fence sections.
We kinda want the parks to all look alike though, too, though, don't we? So I don't know if it needs to look like Turtle Park, even though it's outdated, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we certainly can look at different designs for what goes in the openings. Uh whether, whether you can find anything that's gonna be better than this great design, I don't know, but we can certainly try.
If we find a bench designer.
Did you pencil that one out?
Oh, actually, I designed it. Any other questions down here? It probably is old design, so I'm just kidding, but Daryl and I spent a long time figuring that out.
I'm sure.
Okay, so uh we have a request to speak from Mr. Barwick, would you like to do it now?
Mr. Mayor, Castle, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. As you can see from here, can you go up one more, please? Thank you. Um the. It was one of those, I don't know, terms, that was designed as very passionate. Back to patient, oh, solid wall all the way around, for the reason that the mayor did say, but it depends on what you're gonna be seeing across the street, which is mostly. Could be your commercial sections where there are a lot of unique individuals who like to be at a pizza bar. Place that's a sports bar, like, plus place, and people very, very loud, and I don't know. And speaking with all my neighbors in this area here, they really do want to reduce the amount of sound that's gonna be going up. Since that was already stated, they're often like, two, they would like to have option two. I would recommend that in my opinion, would be for option one. Both the solid wall and the defense here, I've heard they have the solid wall we're on, to reduce the amount of sound that's going in. But from what Keith is saying and Steph is saying, with the recommendation, is be an option one, option two. And I would prefer to see option one because the noise has been reduced in that, in that entire areas. One of the things that Keith did refer to, the mayor has talked about, was the amount of visitors. Now, how that wall, you can spend your time in that park, and I have to thank the police department for their response. I was on the phone with a number one operator, and while I tried, it's time I got to about two or three cents into my concern with. The individual who decided that they were going to pick, decided to live in my side yard here, they, they were there. I think this was an amazing thing, that they were just good, they were good at that, so I wanna say, thank you, well, to the, good dear police department, they did.
Avenue. Avenue, it's actually Avenue with the.
Guns drawn.
So that they were there and they helped remove this individual who had decided, they said that my side yard was public property, they could be there and I could go to hell. That's not what she told, so. The gentleman on police department agreed, yeah, they, this was their incident, the individual decided they wanted to try to live in my side yard. So I believe it's called the law, to reduce that and the solid wall can try to keep people from wanting to live in our parks.
Robert, are you right, are you right there on Bill and the Wave on Camelback? Is that your, right there, okay?
Yeah, so I'm very passionate about this one, very, very, that's all.
Keith, the height of the wall now versus what we're talking about, how, what's the difference?
The pony well is, uh when you're standing next to it, it's about right.
So it's hoppable?
Oh, it's very hoppable, but some of those perspective-wise, it's the top curve, Camelback to the base of that wall is actually about three feet. So there's three feet and then the core of the wall, depending where you look.
So we're talking about going to nine, nine-ten, right?
Right.
So that would be twelve above the road.
It will come, well, as it comes forth, the slope goes downwards, so it'll probably be.
So from a perspective of sound, which was the initial concern, the the additional four to five feet of height will certainly help dampen sound.
Yeah, yeah, you can see that, the reflection, we can see that, you know, it's gonna be great, it's, it's, gotta keep that note because. The police department, how do you understand, is that? Camelback from Dice Art going west becomes a gray strip all the way down to the roof. And people, and the residents, they, it's quite hot out there, especially if it's Friday or Saturday night, it's a lot of fun. But it's, it's, it's major, wider conditions, the option one is to, I think that would be, I think that's one for that part. And for, also, we did receive, uh in the mail, and noticed that there are three zoning issues. That have to be taken, taken care of, go to open space for that entire area that are now, I think, a few one ninety, and a couple of pieces that need to be re-sold. That's not going, kind of zoning until June, beyond that taking care of. Exactly, the late, the construction of the wall, cause I think, sorry, I think you said it was gonna be in twenty-four, correct?
Uh, Mr. Baric, or, we hope construction would start this summer. As far as the cleanup, that's really just a cleanup of code from in the past, just make it, to make it all open space. Uh Mr. Frog is working on that.
Yeah, yeah, well, my assumption. Okay, cool. Thank you for, yeah, the opportunity to speak, I really appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you, well, thank you for coming down and letting us know your perspective on it, cause it is important here, I mean, you're definitely impacted, you know, directly by. I mean, you're definitely impacted, you know, directly by the construction of this of this wall, and so. It, to large part is for you and your neighbors, that's is the Councilman Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I get a, the drawing of the view, the little peekaboo, yeah, that, yeah, no?
The first one?
Yeah, that, um, there's a problem with it.
I have a drawing of that, that's part of what this is gonna be about, is to try to do the design and figure out.
I know, and I'm gonna make a comment about, what what happens is on this, is that becomes a step. Now you got, you go up, let's say, three feet, and then you've got a step, and you can get up there and then go over the wall at this point. If that was all solid at this eight or ten or whatever, you you can't do that. Okay, that, that is actually, um, not a part of a pool safety fence, you can't do that. And Brian, you can help me out here, I'm thinking that that, it just becomes a little easier for people to to go over the fence by putting that in.
That bot- that bottom section, um, that, see, that that was the comment about, like, that wall is only about six feet tall, that you're looking at.
Right.
So you go at ten feet tall, and you add the four feet in the bottom section, now you're not gonna step up on anything.
I'm just telling you, it's easier to get over the wall when you put in this.
Oh, it is, I suppose it will still be easy. I think it'd still be a pretty good, pretty good task, you know, literally, cause you gotta go. Well, for you, I think. Well, I don't know about the Vice Mayor, he may be able to hop it. Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Could you go back to the aerial of the neighborhood? Yeah. It looks like there's four houses that are directly affected by this fence.
They were the one.
Bumber Bears and three others across the street. They're the most directly affected by it. Yeah, I I would like to hear with those four people, I know what one of them says now, like, know what the other three say. And if the other three are against the view, I think those are the four that are most directly affected by this, and I would give them a lot of weight.
Uh, I think that's a good idea, but I I would think, I think it would be worthwhile, we can, we can go ahead and get this, this fence, the design work on it done.
Yes.
And have some accurate renderings done of what the actual fence is gonna look like, and what the view sections are, and and then take those and go talk to the people. So you have, you can have something that is more representative of what, you know, what's gonna actually look like. And if if they, you know, and then, I don't, we can do the design, I don't think, and the design's like, if you take the view section out, and you put the block, you put blocks in there, it don't make any difference at all, you're not gonna change the design, so. We would be done, we could get that part of it done, and then make this decision, final decision, whether we put any view, any view sections in. Based on, based on the actual renderings of what we think we're gonna build.
But, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna have to like, I wanna keep it moving.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let's get it moving forward, and once, once we get a, you know, we get a, we understand what we're exact, you know, as much as we can, what it's gonna look like. I mean, what's the relationships on the heights of the different things and the widths? Then we'll go, we'll go to the door and just get, get input from the, from the residents.
Why can't you take it the way it is?
Because what you're looking at, you can look, that's accurate, okay, but what you're looking at in terms of those pictures of the different view sections are not accurate for what we're gonna build.
Okay.
Because of the height difference, I mean, literally, you're talking about going from six feet to ten feet, it's totally different.
Mayor, uh, the, as you mentioned, the footing will not change too much across, say, these sections, maybe here, but the.
I think building, building, build the footing to, and so it's all solid. We can always stick in some view if we want, it's.
The biggest, I'd say the biggest, uh, uh, catch right now is for us to get the utility coordination, uh, going, so we wanna have the biggest footing. And then check out maps up against the utilities, cause I can tell you right now, we're gonna have a couple of conflicts we have to resolve, that takes time.
Yeah, it's even more, just design it as a solid wall for the footing.
Utility companies don't like to look at plans unless they have an engineer seal on, so. Or we always get a little bit delayed by utility relocations.
So is there, is there a motion to go forward with with the final design of the perimeter wall phase seven? Uh, allowing for footings that would, that could accommodate either a, a solid wall or or a view, a view wall?
So we'll check it.
Is that, is that all for you, all right? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, excuse me, wait one second, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'm a little hesitant in here, that I don't wanna spend five, spend five or ten thousand dollars designing two different kinds of walls.
I don't know, we're gonna design one wall, it's just the footer has to be big enough, so that if we wanna have it all solid, we're gonna use that footer.
Understand that.
We're gonna change that.
But to have these guys come back at us and have a design for one solid wall and design for that panel be, be, you know, see-through wall, whatever. At the rates that we pay, you're talking five or ten grand.
Uh, it shouldn't be, I mean, you're gonna, we're gonna have, you're gonna have one, one design that says, this, it's this panel is solid, and then you're gonna have one, this is, this is panel, but you got this, this kind of neutral. It's gonna be an extra panel on the side.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the, um, the design has several footings already, because, uh, the lessons learned on other pro- uh, other sections where we've crossed the utility or came a little close to a tree. The footings were, you know, have a big horseshoe on them, where they go vertical, so those are already in the utility into the design right now. What the change would be, would, uh, go into the plan view and change, use putting A here, putting B here. So it's not as big of an impact, uh, based on the design as it's set up right now.
Listen, listen, if you wanna go to residents, this could just the most accurate thing you can ask them about.
I'm just attempting to avoid, aren't in the tunnel hundred thousand dollar expense of a hundred thousand dollar.
It counts enough. All right, any, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify, I say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries, get the design work going, and get us some accurate, uh, some accurate renditions that we can actually take around the neighbors, get input on those, okay? Okay, so now we'll go back into the normal order. The normal order, and the first item is ten A, introduction of ordinance twenty-four dash two eighty and city code amendments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council, you might recall last month, um, we discussed this item. Uh, there was, uh, just various cleanup items, uh, related to the city code. There were some, um, items that night that, um, we thought that we needed to take out and bring back to a future study session, so we've done that. So last month, um, the request was to actually introduce the ordinance, council chose not to take the introduction. Uh, have staff go back, rework, uh, the annexation, the ordinance number uh, twenty-four dash two eighty, so what we've done since the March council meeting, we removed the swimming pool discussion, vehicle advertising, parking, and slingsets. And we will come back at a future study session, hopefully in May, and discuss those separate. So tonight, the request is that you, uh, introduce the ordinance twenty-four dash two eighty, amending the city code, chapter seven, nine, thirteen to fourteen, these are related to different sections on the building, section, health and sanitation, bicycle mopeds, golf carts, and pedicabs, and subdivision regulations, and with that, I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Questions from council?
There is some further explanation, cause I know it'll come about from members at the White Wall. Both voting members of Litchfield Park, but those that live in Hidden Terrace, but those that live in Draven Summit, they drive their golf carts across that. This ordinance prohibit those carts from ever touching Camelback whatsoever, cause you have people that come out of these neighborhoods and come right across, then jump in off of, uh, Villanueva on Camelback. So, and then you have people that come down from your neighborhood, Matthew, that just go through the crosswalk, which I think we have a city ordinance that says golf carts can't go on crosswalks or sidewalks anymore, don't we?
Yes, sir, they're, they're supposed to be on the, on the Rose Killer sidewalks, they're actually built for golf carts.
So that, so I mean, as it relates to Litchfield Park residents, the ones that live in your neighborhood, literally gonna be the ones that have their own golf carts, that we're gonna now say not only can you not now drive your golf cart down the sidewalk, but you can't drive it across.
It it will cause issues for mainly the people that don't use the Rose Killer sidewalks. Like, for example, there's a lot of people in Litchfield Greens that don't like use the pathways. Uh, there's also people too that don't wanna go down to use the underpasses, they'd rather take the shortcut, and unfortunately, that means driving down the road. So now they wouldn't be able, if this passes, this is just for first reading.
Understood, yeah.
But if this is passed, you couldn't have golf carts drive down Litchfield, Camelback, or Dyser, either one. Now, as far as, as far as the crosswalk question, I don't remember, because I I know they use the crosswalks all the time. And they're fine as far as, again, as far as on the pink or rose colored pathways, so the question there would be the crosswalks. So we'll have to look at that and see, but then it'd be a question of connectivity too. I think as long as it's still on sidewalks, it's a question of the crosswalks. I I don't know, so we we have to get back to you on that, do you know, Joe?
Not off the top of my head. And I get, I get the heart of it is, you don't want somebody driving down Camelback from Dyser to Litchfield Road.
Right. And people, and people are doing it. There are people that are driving golf carts to Camelback, and it amazed me that people are what they do.
That's actually a good point, though, uh, because I know some people that live in the gated community, just east of Frye's.
Yeah.
They drive all the time, so I think they must go down and cross at Villanueva.
Yeah.
They go in the dirt, right? But they gotta have a way to come in, I mean, that's a long fair, I think, so I don't know. I don't know if this precludes that, and some of them.
Matthew's neighborhood, in golf carts.
Well, the other issue's gonna be, when we put in a right turn lane there, there's not gonna, there's not gonna be a sidewalk for a golf cart to go on anymore, right? There's no, there's no room, and that's what, that's how they cross over sometimes, but I don't know.
Usually they, they come down the sidewalk, it runs.
Which is fine, but.
West side of Frye's and the west side of, uh, the houses on.
Yeah.
Exit out of your subdivision on the southwest corner. And that was in the original design. It was kind of a, kind of, it was two inches back of the Frye's.
There's a pathway, there's a pathway there for golf carts. At a Sunset Terrace.
Yeah.
But there's some neighborhoods that have, that have gaps, like, I'm, I'm, you guessed, to me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure that Litchfield Greens has a gap. Where where there's an, where there's an area of pink strip, they connect it.
No, there's, I mean, the, the literal green, you can, you can drive on the sidewalk.
Just come across.
You know, that's, that's to the, on the east side of Litchfield Greens, that sidewalk goes all the way from.
Very windy, but you can do it.
Yeah.
It gets narrow at the, at the commercial property to the, to the north.
It's narrow all the way.
Well, it's, it's wider in front of the greens, and then it gets narrow right there as it gets to the commercial.
I don't know, just kinda devil's advocating this thing, but the other comment I would make too is, uh, you mentioned cachet, so, you know, the, the design for, you know, this, the square is for golf carts, so now that golf cart that lives in cachet is gonna hypothetically have to go through our roundabout right there, which is on Litchfield Road, which is thirty-five miles per hour, so technically, would they be?
Well, they just take the underpass.
But that's exactly what they'll do, they'll drive all the way down to the underpass.
The, the golf, we're up on, up.
North of.
One that we normally take to go to the red course, that's our, that's our, and we can, they can use that.
They have a gate right there.
That's true, and then the people coming down Village Parkway, they're gonna have to turn, and, I mean, this.
No, they would have to go over.
They, they should use tunnels, the question is, will they, sir?
Right.
Uh, if, if I'm understanding your, your question here, what I would recommend here is that we do.
Because in the roundabout, it's like twenty or twenty-five.
I guess that's true.
That's, it is, that's right, that's a good point. Um, I would recommend that we do, that we do a first reading, and if there's a concern with the crosswalk, we could certainly add some word in here to say that golf carts couldn't allow, couldn't cross the streets through approved crosswalks.
Yeah.
Cause we don't, we don't care if they cross the street. What we don't want is driving down Camelback, driving down Litchfield, driving down Dyser. But we can certainly address that if it's a concern, especially since this is just a first reading. That allows us to make that revision between first and second.
We ran to this years ago, when we were amending some of these ordinances, and we realized that our cart paths were legal to drive on until you got to the asphalt, and then it was illegal to drive across the road, the way they were written. And then you got back on the cart path, and it was legal again. And we, we modified the ordinance, was five or ten years ago.
If we didn't, we better make it clear.
Yeah, we modified it, just breaking that out, we didn't realize this problem until this came to.
The section is told, uh, if you want me to read it, it says, no person shall drive a vehicle other than a golf, than a golf cart upon or across a sidewalk, bicycle lane, or pathway, except to enter or leave the street, and only after giving right of way to all bicycle mopeds, golf carts, and pedestrians. It, I don't see anywhere in the, in the section thirteen, thirteen dash three, which is the operation of bicycles, mopeds, and golf carts, that it talks about, uh, it talks about crossing sidewalks, but it doesn't say anything about, um, crosswalk, crosswalks.
We, we, we have a pink path section in our code somewhere.
Right, well, that's, that's our, that's our pathways.
Yeah, the cars, the cars are legal on the pink sidewalks, and not on the regular sidewalks.
Correct.
And we tweaked that ordinance to make it legal to go off of the pink sidewalk, go through the crosswalk, and get back on the pink sidewalk on the other side. Cause the way it was written was kinda screwy.
Did you say pink sidewalk?
Pink path, pink sidewalks are pathways, they're cart paths.
They're wider, they're wider than regular sidewalks, they're for golf carts.
Yeah, they're golf, they're for golf carts, legal.
So if I, if I heard that correctly, someone coming out of Sunset Terrace is not allowed to drive the golf cart on the sidewalk?
That's a pathway, it's a pink pathway.
That's right, one of my neighborhood is a pathway, so.
What's that?
The one, the one in my neighborhood is a pathway.
Okay, and let's go the other way, so if you're coming out of the tunnel, like you're going to the red horse, and you're going north, that's not a pink path.
Well, it's asphalt, but we actually need, it needs to be replaced. But then it gets to, it gets to a pathway width.
I'm talking about the concrete.
Yeah, the concrete, unfortunately, the concrete was put in by cachet, and they didn't color it, and they should have, because it's the width of our pathway, our pathways.
I'm actually, I'm sorry, I apologize, it was clear, I'm talking about north of the tunnel to the entrance of the greens, and then beyond the greens up to Camelback.
That is a sidewalk.
So the cart is not allowed.
That's correct.
Not supposed to be driven out.
So on that.
People do it all the time.
Absolutely, I, I do it. That's the only way to get into the greens.
Yeah.
Do you see him, his golf cart?
Take him to jail. I, we really probably should fix all, because the, the golf carts have become so, you know, so common in the neighborhoods that we use the sidewalks and the pathways interchangeably.
I think it's part of the charm of the city, right? So what I would recommend, if you wanna introduce, introduce, but we need to clean this up so that we get all this, so we have normality about what's right and what's not.
Yeah.
Including the fact that roundabout is a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, cause we say thirty-five mile, right, or or you can only be on.
For, for roads thirty, this changes, so the roads that are thirty-five or over, gonna have golf carts, to the mayor's point, the roundabout is a twenty-five.
Might be twenty-five and over.
What's that?
The, the golf, the golf cart, cause speed limit.
Why, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't, why, well, golf carts, I, I'm not opposed, just, I'm not as concerned about this. We're, we're solving a problem that we really don't have.
Yeah, sure.
My mind, so, I'm talking to city manager, he thinks there's a problem, I just don't see it.
Yeah.
You know, uh, I saw somebody on Dyser, literally, they came out of, out of Litchfield Park on one of the sites, the first site street on Villanueva.
They had to go to Albertson's.
Yeah, they did, that's exactly, they went out and got it, they waited on Dyser, people are going ninety miles an hour. Drove down to the left turn area, and they left them turning.
It was on the news, they, uh, last Friday night, somebody right, right there, with the cart.
With the cart.
And, and, and I guess my point is, is it's, is just golf carts are an intrinsic part of this community.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's just, if we're gonna touch anything with golf carts, just do it, do it right.
Yeah, be careful.
Make it all inclusive and make it, you know, so, be careful, that's all.
Uh, I would agree, I, I think we need to revise, we'll make sure that we're covered on the crosswalks. And I think as, as somebody said, we need to adapt our sidewalks correctly, where you can get to neighborhood to neighborhood, on golf cart pathways, not sidewalks.
Well, but there's like the greens, you're not, you've gotta go along, uh, along that sidewalk, it's in, you know, it's in between the wall and, uh, Litchfield Road. That's, that's really your only, your only.
Sort of diet piece?
It's a thorough.
It's never gonna be a pathway.
Well, now that we have a roundabout, it slowed it down, so you can.
And we have never had any problem with it, I mean, it's not like, it's not like we've got all these issues coming up because of people using that sidewalk. They use it all the time, every day you can see parts of it. And then, uh, you know, it's like, we are solving a problem that we don't have. I, I, what my suggestion is, we can adopt the cleanups of everything else, but let's leave this out, and let's deal with it separately, and go through and really have, so we have enough of a conversation. Let's deal with it separately and, and go through and really have, so we have enough of a conversation.
Didn't we have a motion at a second?
Uh, no, because I stopped it because of.
A discussion.
I asked, I, because the vice mayor raised his hand, and so it got, it got sidetracked. You agree, or you think they're being?
Thinking.
Do we have a motion in a second? We do not, yeah, there's no motion, so. We need to make a motion to introduce. Ordinance twenty-four dash two eighty. Except for the section on chapter thirteen. Except for that section.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so chapter thirteen, we'll put it along with the other items that need more, more intensive individual discussion. Next item, library association wins termination. Mr. Williams.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mayor and Council, uh bear with me for a second so I can explain to you some of the relationship here. So, the building that you're in, the library building was actually built in nineteen seventy-nine. There wasn't formally, of course, a city until nineteen eighty-seven. This building was raised through donations to the community, the Litchfield family, that's why, of course, it's named for um, Mrs. Denny. Was a large donor for this program, and a lot of people in the community donated money to get the library going as well. It's my understanding they raised two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in seventy-nine to build the library, and over time it's been added to. When the library was built, it was built so that the county library district, which runs libraries and still do today, would do the operations. Again, it was built with donations, but the library association, which was a local group, would handle things like utilities, maintenance, janitorial services. Okay, so over time, there's been a lot of different agencies there. So just to be clear, the city has owned this building since nineteen eighty-nine. We got it when we got the wreck. There's been some question about who owned this building, but that's been clarified a long time ago, again, the city does own the building. So there's also different leases. Currently, the library association has a lease from nineteen ninety-six, it was a fifty-year lease. Where the library association leased this building, and they agreed to pay for, again, maintenance, utilities, janitorial services. And internet telephone for this office right here. The internet and the phone for the rest of the building is provided by the library district, it's complicated. Also, the library association that I'm talking about, for years, they did what you guys know as the Fall Art and Wine Festival. They did that event, they raised money and they invested that money, and for decades, that paid for the maintenance of this building. That being said, at some point, the library association or that event got too big, they couldn't do it anymore, and the city took it over, now it's one of Tricia's events, and she does a great job of it. But of course, as time went on, there were no more revenues coming in, the association funds have been dwindling more and more and more to where they are today.
Fisher will not agree to maintain this building.
She, she needs something else to do.
Get your committee together.
So as we've gotten this discussion, I met with the county library director, Jeremy Reger, met with him. And we talked about this, because also the current library lease that's between us and the county library district. That was signed in two thousand nine, is expiring June thirty, we're working on that document too, it was a good time to clean this up. Especially as we start planning new library and so on and so forth. So we met with Tina Norwalk, Tina is the library association administrator, she has been in that position since nineteen ninety-six. And met with her and discussed this, and long story short, the library association is down to one member. And they're out of money.
Tina.
That's correct. And basically, they would like, or Tina or they would like to disband the library association. For obvious reasons. And the city in exchange would agree to take over the maintenance of this building. The utilities of this building and janitorial services. Again, just to be clear, the library district would continue to do operations, they would have the staff, they would have internet and phone for over there. But as far as general cleaning of the building, maintenance of the building and utilities, we would now cover, the city would take on those things. This will make it much simpler for the new agreement with county that's going forward. Um I, I would like to note, I offered for us to honor Mr. Norwalk for her years of service, and she didn't want to do that, but I did try, and we appreciate the years of service that she had.
So, has she been paying those, like the utilities?
The library association has, yes, sir.
Okay, and, but they have, they have, so they have no more funds.
That's correct, sir.
So how are they gonna pay utilities this month?
Yeah. Lights are still on.
They have, they, well, they have, they have very little.
Alright, I mean, I'm just.
So we, we'd be taking those over, and actually Tina was in my office this morning and signed this agreement this morning pending your approval. She, she's ready to go home.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have to declare a conflict on this, and I won't partake in this event. Um, I drafted this lease almost thirty years, I drafted this lease almost thirty years ago. Representing the library association.
Yeah, yeah.
Susan Goodwin represents the city. So I'm, I'm, I'm out of this.
Okay, put your hand down.
I, I would say that the very first volunteer thing I ever did was library association, and I was very involved in all the members, I had no clue we paid. For this kind of stuff, I don't know what it went for, it just doesn't make sense anymore, so I think it makes sense to. Yeah.
Yes. What, what is this gonna cost? Nothing?
Not significant.
Okay.
She's got in their budget.
Oh, you have some money in there?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to terminate the library association lease?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
People back like Sherry Davis, all those people that were members forever.
I've seen.
Yeah.
And show that it, that they're the vice mayor of state, declare a conflict of state. Next item is library planning project, Mr. Williams.
Uh Mayor and Council, a while back, we started discussing a new library building. As you know, you're in the current library building, and those of you that have been council for a while, you remember, there were some issues with this in the past, I, I think like in, like two thousand. To build a new library, and there was some back and forth, back and forth, and long story short, it didn't happen. At the last meeting, the vice mayor had asked that we reach out to county to see if there was any drawings of that, and if there ever were, they have long since been destroyed, they don't keep them that long, but we did try. Um we did engage Susan Chornetsky to start doing some preliminary drawings, I have some very preliminaries here. That you can see later if you'd like to, so they're interesting to see, though, she started working on that. Um, Councilor Donnie was asking about this earlier. Long story short, we're gonna be asking that the, the city would donate the land. We would build a new library at the intersection of Missouri and Litchfield Road, there on the west side of Litchfield Road, so it would go along there with the hilltop. And that, so the city would donate the land, the county would build the building, and the library district would do the operations. While moving pieces.
Sir?
Who wants?
Who went on the building?
Yeah.
City probably on the building, probably nice.
So the county would build the shell, but the library district would do the TIs, and they would do the operations. That's the plan currently, and recently, there was another library that was built that followed the same model. I can show that article, you know, that they would like to see it. But that being said, we've been going back and forth with Scott Asham for a while now, Asham is department's assistant. On things they need to see to take this divorce supervisors. And there are several things they asked for, one was they want to see formal action from the city council that we would like to move forward, planning a new library as discussed. They would like to see some preliminary conceptual elevation, so it's working on that, it's getting passed around with you right now. And that's why the sign was on the agenda tonight, so we can start planning for this, and this is also part of the roundabout discussion. Because you're gonna have a lot of new traffic coming in there today that is not there today, and one thing I'd like to be clear for the public. Um if and when we do build a new library in conjunction with the county, this building is not going anywhere. The city's plans at this time would be for city staff to move into this library and for it to eventually be city hall. Because eventually, we're gonna be outgrown as Litchfield Square develops around us. That, that's the tentative idea anyway, so I'll be very clear, nobody's talking about demolishing this building, that's, that's not what, what we're saying here. We're just talking about building a new library, and this is part of that process. That's a lot of moving pieces, I welcome any questions if there are any.
Questions?
Thank you, um, a couple of things, I know that the, uh, the, uh. Library that they built out at, at, basically at the White Tank.
White Tanks.
It was kind of, uh. It moved it from here out to there.
That's right.
And is that gonna, is, does that come into play here?
No.
Is there some sort of issue about?
No.
No?
It does not.
That's, that's a good thing. Um, the other thing is, and Matt had just kind of touched on this, is, once, once you get up to Missouri. And if you put a, a roundabout or whatever there. You come in, you come to the west, and then you're gonna need a frontage road coming south, and it'll be right. Either in front or behind uh this new library.
It's, you know, there actually is a preliminary site plan, if you will, that shows placement of all this stuff, and that. This, you're talking, it's been referred to as a frontage road, yeah, it is a frontage road, it's really part of a, a, a series of parking lots, basically. And you, it's a way to get between these little parking lots, so you got a parking lot that's kind of for the hilltop. You got a parking lot that's by the train station, you got a parking lot by the library, and they're all, they're all like rustic parking lots, they're not gonna be pavement, it's gonna be crushed. Crushed granite or some sort of like DG, so that it, so that we don't make it look like an asphalt jungle there. And so all that, all that's what we gotta work.
And just one.
Try to figure all that out, but it's really not a, we don't want a real frontage road in, it's not gonna be like that.
But it is, you have access from that, all the way down to, well, probably down to the.
Probably all the way to Denny.
To Denny.
Literally, yeah, but not south.
No.
And some of that, all, all of that site plan that we were working on, all of it changes because now Sun Health no longer wants to be part of this deal. Because Sun Health actually wanted to use part of our hill for their farming operation and this and that, and. So all the stuff is kind of all tied together, so now we gotta untangle, untangle all of it, just stop, you know, stop worrying about Sun Health. So that, all that needs to be done, and it's part of getting this authorized, we just, so we can go work on it.
One thing you might not know is what was, was the mayor was saying, eventually Sun Health, Sun Health's, Sun Health's plans to build basically a loop road. To go from Litchfield Road to Camelback, back here like this, that would come down through their property, granted, that might be a decade out. Because they don't need it right now, so there's nothing out there in that desert, but eventually, they will have probably single-family houses out there. But again, we don't, we don't have a decade to wait, so what we would recommend.
The, the loop road really is Missouri. So all we care, all we really care about is to go ahead and get the intersection put in. And then get Missouri stubbed out, maybe a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet, doesn't, it doesn't have to go a little far.
That's right.
And then we can tie it into these parking lots and whatever.
Just one par- parking lot up there, probably.
It's gonna be multiple smaller ones, because you get, you're gonna have, you need one for the, for the hill. Need one for the library, need one for maybe the train station, we're gonna have to figure out what, what'll be smaller, like little pocket, pocket parking lots, we will.
So who, in the case of library and the, the county and the city, who pays for the parking lot?
The city's gonna pay for the parking lots.
Because it's our land.
It's our land, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna design a place on that. We've already told the, we've already told. Uh, the park society that we would put in the parking lot. You know, a parking lot, uh they may have to do.
ADA.
ADA, a little deal by their thing, they may have to do that, but we'll put in a, you know, this, you know, this. Part of this pocket parking thing so that people can park there. But we gotta get it, we gotta get it, we need to start doing it in a more formal process, we actually get some site plans put together and.
Right.
We do this rendering of the, of the building, and so then it can be taken to the county and the county can say yes or no that they'll, that they'll build whatever.
Well, we have. Mr. Hickman.
Correct.
Correct. Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, yes, Councilor Claire.
Any concerns about traffic, about people being able to get, you know, I imagine here. People riding bikes or walking from the neighborhood, they're not gonna be able to do that.
Well, I mean, basically, you're gonna be able to get across Litchfield Road in a variety of places, crosswalks, and you're gonna have sidewalks, pathways, whatever. So why wouldn't they be able to get there?
It'll go, it'd be harder, let's say that.
Well, it's harder than going, it's harder than going to this one, this building right here, and it will be harder than that.
But we can incorporate pathways. We can fix our pathway system, dye the sidewalk in front of the greens pink and make it a pathway and.
We'll make it a, that's, we can fix on that.
That's. Coming in tonight, I saw what I think is a very typical situation, which is really cool, where a family. Mom and dad and a little kid, this is about to stall, they're going to the library again, and they drove here, they parked right out there. So I mean, it's, do some kids come here on their bikes, I'm sure some do, but a lot of them come in here and they park in this parking lot, and they move on. Same thing they'll do up there.
That exact same comment was made by half a dozen very noisy people, and why we lost the library last time.
Yeah.
This is, it, the community's changed, you've got the Georgia Large Library, which is beautiful now, and it's like a site, we need to make this a site for people to visit, you know?
Uh yeah, it just, it needs to be bigger, this is too small, you know, this, this is one of the most heavily trafficked library, libraries in the entire system. And it's the smallest.
That's right.
You know, it's just a mess, and we, and we can't, you can't do everything that can be done, and if we put, we put the library up. And then you got the historic society there, you got a apartment ranch, you got this train station, you've got all these things going on on the hill, all of that stuff. Literally supports that library. I mean, it's just, it's the perfect place to put it. I think, I mean, so. Right now, we just wanna, we need authority so we can move forward, and have to find out if it's even feasible. Alright, any other questions? If not, is there a motion to. Uh direct city staff to begin the planning for a new city library? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, the direction is adopted.
Get it in.
Get it done, Litchfield Square requests for proposals, Mr. Estes.
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, the, this meeting, you'd ask. For us to come back with a, uh, RFP that would allow for us, for the city to. To market the remaining parcels for Litchfield Square. On an ongoing basis without a, uh, an end date, so I. Uh, prepared what, what I felt was the, the best type of proposal, what, doesn't have a, uh, a specific end date. For the RFP. But it does provide that, once the city receives a, a, a proposal on a specific lot, that that. Triggers a thirty-day period for accepting any additional proposals for that lot before closing out. The RFP for that specific lot.
It's a great idea.
I don't know who came up with it.
I don't either, it's a great idea. It will allow us to get out and try to market these, and we've already got people who are interested in a couple of the sites, so. We're always gonna get it moving and move it forward. So is there a, uh, is there a motion to approve the issues of request for, request for proposals on. For the sale and or lease, uh, development of Litchfield Square lots?
Second.
Any further discussion?